Good morning, everybody. We were experiencing some technical difficulties, I apologize, which we have just resolved. The time is now ten thirty and we are just about to start. So in accordance with section forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful, non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land that we are meeting on as the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations Inuit and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto was covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment, public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have requested in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you'll be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will temporarily be upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During that time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time, and at all other times, your video will be disabled, and you'll be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with a written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are also are not allowed to use share screen and any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect that instruction. People attending in person today, who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application, must fill out the decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with a decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Regarding the hearing procedure, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation. If desired, when the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are advised, the chair, to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you're reaching your five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to the proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, generally, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. We first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they've finished their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has the opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will be then taken into committee for a decision. Before we get to the first item, do we have any minutes from the last meeting that we require to adopt?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have one set of minutes to adopt. It's from our August tenth, twenty twenty, October. Ooh, I should put my glasses on. I should turn my mic off first before I say that. Sorry, Mr. Chair, October tenth, twenty twenty-four. Present was Mr. Allison, Ms. Cassin, Mr. Kubo, Mr. Bartolo, and Mr. Frazilli.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, make a motion to confirm the report.
Okay, do I have a second, or? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? Okay, that is unanimous, and the motion carries. Minutes are adopted. Are there any declarations of interest, the panel or staff, for any of the items in the morning slot? No, no declarations of interest? Okay, are there any deferral requests this morning?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have one item. It's number nine. Unfortunately, we don't see the agent online. We'll try and reach out to the agent so they can present a deferral. In the meantime, that's the only item in a ten a.m. Why don't we proceed to item number one?
Okay. So, did you say we had the applicant or the agent for item number one?
Through you, we do, Mr. Chair. The applicant is unmuted.
Okay, all right. Item number one, five seventy-nine Glen Cairn Avenue. This is a application for consent to sever the property into two residential lots and to build two detached dwellings. There are a number of variances related to this file, including lot area, lot frontage, east and west side main wall heights, building length, number of stories, rear deck area, setbacks related to eaves, a front porch, and a canopy, parking space width, driveway width, and east and west side yard setbacks. On file, I have material from the applicant, including a planning rationale report, staff report from community planning, memo from urban forestry, a memo from engineering and construction services, a memo from transportation, and a late letter of objection from sixty-eight Hillmount Avenue. Let's get the agent with us.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Franco Romano, Action Planning, it's on three twenty-one Lakeshore.
Good morning, Mr. Romano, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Is it my understanding that you will be requesting a deferral on this item?
No, sir, we're ready to proceed. No, there's no reason for deferral. I know staff have provided conditions of approval, and planning staff have objections.
Okay, very good. With that in mind, let's get our five minutes up. Provide you the opportunity to present.
Perfect. If staff can bring up my presentation slide, I'd appreciate it. This is an application that involves severance. It's an existing fifteen point two-four meter wide lot, and the proposal is to construct, to sever a lot into two equal parts of seven point six-two meter frontage. It's located on the south side of Glen Cairn Avenue, within the second block west from Bathurst Street. And what I'm showing in blue on this map is just along Glen Cairn. These are lots that are primarily between seven point six-two meters to ten point one. If staff can stay on my presentation slide, please. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Sorry, I'm seeing scrolling, and I'd like to speak to my slide. I can't see my slide. Staff can bring up the presentation slide. Thank you very, thank you very kindly. So, the blue rectangles that are shown on Glen Cairn are all lots that are seven point six-two meters to ten point one-five meter frontage. The majority of the lots on the street, sixty-eight of them, or fifty-six percent, are less than fifteen meters in frontage. And there are lots that are seven point six-two meters wide that are within the block to the northeast and to the west. To the north, there are lots that are nine meters to ten point one-four meters, and there have been recent severances. And I'm just highlighting three, I guess four of them, in the boxes that are shown there, going from left to right. In twenty twenty-two, there was a severance of seven point six-two meters at six eighty-one Glen Cairn. In twenty fourteen, there was a severance of lots for nine point one-four-five meters at six forty-three Glen Cairn. In two thousand and seven, five thirty-two and five thirty-six Glen Cairn received ten point one-five meter lot frontage. And in twenty twenty-two, there was five seventeen and five nineteen Glen Cairn that received lot frontage variances, ten point one-four meters. I know staff say that there has been some consistency in terms of lot frontage on the street and in the area, and that there has been activity, but it's just simply not correct. We'll see that these severances have occurred. There's even been a removal of detached residential in order to accommodate a mid-rise building that's under construction that I'm showing in the lower right-hand side of the of my slide. So what is being proposed here in terms of lot frontage respects and reinforces a prevailing character, which is lots that are smaller than fifteen meter frontage. And a proposal at seven point six-two meters fits in very well with the existing lot frontages within the immediate context and on the immediate adjacent blocks on the street. And that's consistent with the neighborhood. The broader neighborhood also has a number of other lots that are similarly sized. I know staff stopped at the block next, or the street next to the subject site to the west, and I think the neighborhood is a little wider than that. I can do my slide again. The variances reflect some technical conditions. The basement is being considered the first floor because the midpoint of that basement is closer to established grade. It's a very common condition on this street, and even the predecessor zoning by law, seven six-two-five, and North York by law had similar conditions. And we see in the upper left-hand side of my slide that the basement is the first floor. The first floor is the second floor, and the second floor is the third floor under the bylaw, and that triggers the rear platform size variance as well. And in terms of dwellings, the built form composition and setbacks, we'll see in terms of my visuals, not only on the property map, but in the photographs that I'm showing, there are various dwellings that are similarly sized and also a little wider. But the proposal fits very well in with the with the existing built forms. There's no unacceptable adverse impacts. And I submit that the variance in the consent request satisfy all Planning Act criteria and tests. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any questions at this time? Okay, let's go to our next speaker. We have anybody here to speak to this? Yes, please come down and speak, state your name and address into the mic.
Can you hear me okay?
Good morning.
Morning. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yeah.
Okay. Morning, my name is Akiva. I am the resident and owner of five eighty-one Glen Cairn, which is immediately to the west of the subject property. And I'm here to speak with my wife. We're both reasonable people. And we're here to object about this. To begin with, we were just made aware of this only a couple of weeks ago. Neither the applicant nor the agent for the applicant spoke to us, shared any plans with us, spoke to any of the neighbors. And unlike some of the other projects that have been done in the neighborhood where neighbors have been consulted and plans have been shared to alleviate some of the concerns. And it's not a, I'm not here, I'm here to speak to my immediate neighbor, whether it's one or two houses. And that's really what we're here to speak about. There's fourteen-plus variances that are being looked at. And while there might be C minor collectively, there are major variances. And collectively, what they put forward, a major change, the intent and purpose of the official plan and municipal planning bylaws for the neighborhood. And if you were to ask yourself if every home did the same thing, would it maintain the character and integrity of the neighborhood? And the answer would be definitively no. And the planning bylaws are put in place to ensure that property owners do not take advantage or prejudice their immediate neighbors and general neighborhood. And these proposed variances collectively and on their own will significantly impact and infringe on my family's enjoyment, our home, and potentially a troubling precedent for the neighborhood. And so we are objecting to the following variances. The lot area, the increases from two to three stories, the depth of the house, the height of the exterior walls on the west side, the size of the platform on the second story, and the porch and eve setback. As allowing these to proceed raises four significant concerns for us, and that is safety, security, privacy, and potential property damage. The maximum number of stories is two. And aside from the fact that contrary to what was been shown, again, they've mostly been with some consent from neighbors and others. But this will allow applicants to construct a house with a kitchen, a foyer, family room, whatever it is on the second floor, adjacent to our bedroom windows, which compromises and normally elevations are set to match. And generally, this will minimize our privacy and increase potential noise, because we don't control who our neighbors are. You know, expanding the deck on the second floor, which is normally a minimal porch, and this would be almost a hundred percent increase. And especially with such a setback that's been removed so close to our house. If someone puts a barbecue there, someone smokes a cigarette, it's in our bedroom, it's in our, it's a potential fire and safety hazard. And candidly, it's a nuisance and something that we shouldn't have to endure. And further, providing a direct sightline for a complete stranger into our property above our, above our bedroom and above our backyard, where we have three young teenage girls and a son, and who not feel comfortable to have prying eyes above them. And that's a serious problem, and I'm sure everyone can agree that as parents, we all have to do what's right for our kids to ensure they feel safe in their own home and environment. And finally, if the eaves and the porch were the setbacks, there is issues of potential elemental runoff, flooding, leaves and debris falling into our property and potentially damaging it. Again, we haven't seen the exact plans, but that is not only a nuisance, but you know, perhaps an engineering report would be able to rectify that. So while we respect the right of the homeowner to build on their property with our multiple significant concerns about the information as presented today, it is clear that the requested variances do not pass the reasonable standard test for intent and purpose of the official plan or zoning by law. And therefore, we are respectfully requesting you to deny the applications as currently submitted. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I just have a, I have a question. I see that you've raised concerns about some of the variances that are related to the buildings that would be proposed if the consent was permitted. So while I understand you have issues with the specific variances, I'm curious what your thoughts are on the consent itself, so the subdivision of the lot to create new lots, whether it'd be supportive of something that?
So I think if it, if it would mitigate our concerns, there's, I only have one neighbor. Whether it's one lot or two lots, it doesn't affect me in that way. What impacts me is the, as presented. And so if a plan was presented that there was a severance that mitigated our concerns, had some consent from the neighbors, to me, that's reasonable. But what's being presented is bullying. And it's someone trying to slide something through based on a few other properties that people have gotten gotten consent for. And here, it's just not, it's just not right.
Fair enough, understood. Okay, any other questions? Yes, Mr. Kaboo.
Yes, sir, you indicated that you did not receive enough notice. When did you receive the notice?
So, so we received notice, I think it was, yeah, I can tell you. I mean, usually, the appropriate thing, I mean, we both work in real estate, and generally, I'm sure you all do. Generally, if you were going to do something this, you would consult your neighbor and say, hey, this is what I'm going to do. I mean, we look at, look at the roster on here, and you see all the consents of approval from neighbors saying, we're going to build a third story. Do you consent? And yes, we've seen the plans, we've come, they've spoken to us. We have had none of that. So the date that this was mailed was October twenty-fourth. So assuming we got that a handful of days later, and you know, here we are today, right? So, I mean, you know, generally speaking, when something like this would happen, you'd come, you'd approach, say this, oh, well, you know what? We have some windows here. Well, maybe if you move those windows, that would be acceptable. Maybe if you didn't, if you agreed to do this, that would work for us. But right now, I mean, there's no extended plans. And whether it's one house or two house, it doesn't really make a difference. I hope that answers.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other speakers? I don't see any other on our list. Okay, let's go back to the applicant. I'd like to provide him the opportunity to respond to the comments that were made by the immediate neighbor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Franco Romano back here again, just. And thank you to Mr. Akiva and her family for coming and speaking. I can't speak to whether or not the, my client approached the neighbor. I know he didn't go along the street, so I apologize if that communication didn't occur before the, before the meeting. There was actual care in the design of the building to ensure that windows do not align side by side. We can continue to work with and reach out to the neighbor to show how those windows do not line, so then they're not side by side. And there's only one second floor window on the west side, and that is to a bedroom. So typically, a bedroom has a window, window coverings as well. The eaves and porch setbacks are actually not on, on Mr. Akiva's side. It's on the opposite side. So you'll see that on the part one drawings on the lower. It's at the bottom of this site plan drawing that's on the screen right now. So the eaves and the porch are setbacks for the interior. So the new property lines, that's the proposed between the two buildings. The west side yard setback is actually one point two meters, which is fairly generous within this neighborhood. There are building setbacks that are smaller than that and have been approved for smaller than that. But one point two meters is fairly common and is actually reasonable in this suburban condition. In terms of the rear deck, certainly we can introduce privacy screening. Happy to have a privacy screening, minimum one point five meters from the deck floor on the west side or even on the west and east side, both properties. And in terms of zoning by law compliance, it is quite common, as we see even on my property map, and staff will do to this as well, that it's quite common for properties to develop in non-compliance to the zoning by law. And we'll see the photographs on my slide, number one, building setbacks, heights, eaves, even flat roof heights are a little above what the, what the zoning by law regulates today. And the eaves, sorry, the, the main wall height variance is forty-four centimeter difference. So that's to the, to the east trough. It doesn't, does not affect the location of, of windows or the, or the building height. Going through my notes, in terms of building depth, I think I indicated in my cover layer that it's an articulated building depth, or building length, rather. The building length is thirty-seven centimeter request, and that's because it's being, it's being measured from the front bay windows to the rear walls. The building itself is pretty close to the seventeen meters. So subject to any questions, I submit that what is being proposed here is very much in keeping, does not create unacceptable adverse impacts, and we'll commit again to ensure that the property owner and construction is working with the neighbor to, once again, ensure that those windows are not aligned and that there's no impacts in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right. Seeing that there's no questions, let's take this into committee. Oh, yes, Mr. Nippel, did you have a question?
No, when we're in committee.
Yes, we're in committee, fantastic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I am, I'm afraid I support, I'm not afraid, I do support the planning committee's comments on this application, where they raise, I think, quite substantial concerns about the lot pattern and therefore the consent. What they've said is that it's introducing a more compact lot pattern than what is existing in the immediate neighborhood, and they believe that that's inconsistent with the official plan. I, I agree with that. I, I realize that in this block, there are no other examples of lots, lot patterns similar to what's being proposed. And I think it's, it's, as the planning department has said, I think it's inconsistent with the official plan. So I, I'm unable to support the consent. The variances, I would argue, are a product of the consent. It's because the site is being subdivided into two really quite small sites that the majority of the variances are necessary. So it goes without saying that I think that the variances are also non-supportable.
Okay. Any other comments, a motion?
Just had some comments there, Mr. Chair. On the face of it, the variances could probably get past, especially the height and some of the other items. I do agree that a lot of them are triggered, a dozen or so, just because of the smaller lot size. So I'm in agreement with that. And generally speaking, the immediate block is quite stable, and all of the lots are of a larger, essentially a fifty percent reduction in what's being asked for. So in principle, I'm not really opposed to severances in most areas. This one's quite small, so I'd probably lean on my colleague's comments there and support his motion.
Okay. A motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move that the consent application be refused. And do you need a separate motion for the variances? Because I, without the consent, the variances are not necessary.
Just, you can say it all in one.
Okay, I, I move that the consent and the variances that are before us be refused as being inconsistent with the official plan intent.
Okay, do I have a second, or? Yes, sir. Mr. Kaboo, all in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. The application is refused. Okay, let's move on. Item number two is number one, Leona Drive. This is an application to construct a new garden suite on top of an existing detached garage. Requires a number of variances, including rear yard setback, north and south side yard setback, penetration of angular planes, building height, eve encroachment, and floor area. On file, I have material from the applicant, a letter of objection from three Leona Drive, and a letter of objection from a Mr. Weston Trot. Do we have the applicant with us? Oh, good morning and welcome. Your name and address for us, please.
My name is Fiona McGill, and I work for Patori Planning and Management. We represent the owners of one Leona Drive.
Okay. All right, going to ask for a presentation on this. Get the five minutes up on the clock, and the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. So good morning, everyone. This minor variance application is needed to permit the construction of a garden suite on the site. The design before you today has gone through several iterations based on city feedback. And it's my understanding that city staff support the proposed development. I understand that there are some letters from property owners with questions and concerns, and I hope that my presentation addresses some of those. But if not, I'm more than happy to discuss after the presentation. and I hope that my presentation addresses some of those, but if not, I'm more than happy to discuss after the presentation. Am I able to have, uh, page four of the planning rationale, um, put on the screen? It's, I think it's labeled cover letter. Yeah, perfect. So it's... This one, yeah, perfect. Thank you. Um, so here we have the subject site. It abuts Glendora Park Trail to the east, Andale Drive to the west, three Leona Drive to the north. And I would say it's pretty ideally situated with three out of the four yards having very little potential for privacy issues. It's, I also want to emphasize just how desirable the site's location is. It's within walking distance of one of the city's largest commercial employment centers, close to Young Shepherd Subway Station, Melaspen Square, the 401, schools and parks. And it's very well situated for gentle intensification. Can you please scroll to page 12 of the planning rationale? It's the last page. Perfect, thank you. Um, so here you can see that the, the site is currently under construction and there's a two-story detached dwelling that's being built. It's just about done, and then there's also a new detached garage that's under construction at the top right. Um, it's still in that state, it hasn't finished construction. And the site is zoned and designated for low-density uses and what we're proposing, which is what we are proposing subject to some site-specific criteria. Um, and then can you please go to the architectural plans? Page one. Yes, perfect, thanks. So... Here's the proposed site plan. Um, the proposal utilizes the existing garage footprint and seeks to construct a second-story, two-bedroom addition. So just for some background, the under-construction detached garage received minor variance approval at the Ontario Municipal Board on September 7th, 2017. What we're proposing today is the building footprint that is, that was approved at the OMB with, um, a small addition to the west side of the ground floor and then a second-story addition. The request brings a result of the proposed garden, garden suite, um, being placed on the second floor upon the existing garage. And there are no overlook or privacy concerns resulting from the proposal. And no trees will be affected by the proposal, and the second story has been designed to minimize impacts. And then can we scroll to page three? So from the ground floor plan, you can see that the two-car garage will remain, and there'll be a laundry room, storage closet, furnace room, bicycle parking. And then next page, please. And here's the second floor plan. It's a very functional two-bedroom unit. I think altogether it's about 860 square feet. This is a lar, highly livable space, and there's also no windows facing north towards three Leona Drive. And then if you can please scroll to page six. Yes, thank you. So this shows what the garden suite will look like from the street. Um, the ground to ceiling, the ground to roof height is 5.6 meters. Can you please scroll to page seven, the next page? Thank you. And then, so here's the north elevation. As I mentioned, there's no windows facing the property to the north to minimize privacy. All the windows will be facing east, west and south where there's no budding residential uses. Next slide, please, or next page. Thank you. So the... This shows some of the elevation. This shows some of the changes from the original design that have been made, including a 0.5 meter step back above the first story to reduce impacts to the north and a 0.5 cantilever over the first story to the south to, over the, over top the driveway. Um, this is so that the two-bedroom unit can remain. And then if, and so just to conclude, the proposed development aligns with the objectives of EHON and aims to prioritize gentle density. It also aligns with the province, uh, wanting to override certain performance standards to enable garden suites. And we also spoke with Councilor Chang last week, and she had no objections. And, uh, it's my opinion that it meets Section 45, one of the Planning Act and represents good planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any questions? Yes, Mr. Nipoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a two-car garage contemplated, and am I correct that the foundation is in?
Yes, that's correct.
That garage has the same north side yard setback as the garden suite, and you're asking for a variance for that now. So did, is, is the foundation that's there currently not legal?
Oh, no, it is legal. It was, it was approved at the Ontario Municipal Board, and they received building permit for it.
So then I don't understand why you need a variance for the north side today because the second floor is actually set back. It's only the main floor that's impacted by the north yard, the north side setback.
It's because it's subject to the garden suite policies. Whereas the, what's currently built is, was subject, was subject to the OMB decision. So that was a detached garage, whereas this is a garden suite.
Okay, and the, the decision you have previously allows this north setback?
Yes.
For garage.
Yeah, for a garage.
But because they're changing it to a garden suite, they lose the variances because it's, I mean, it's certainly, they're proposing something different altogether, so they're coming back for the variance now.
And they're setting, they're setting the second floor further back anyway, so it's, okay.
That's right.
And so the variance you're requesting is only for the first floor? The north setback?
There's... Sorry.
So you've got two north setbacks. You've got for the second floor, it's, it's a larger setback because it's setback. And the main floor, it's shorter setback. So which, you're asking for a variance for the north setback. It's for the main floor only, right?
It's for this... Yeah, it's for the main floor and the second floor as well. Like, it's the whole building.
Second floor setback would be, I guess what I'm trying to determine, you've proposed a building that steps back. If it steps back, then the setback for the second floor is different than the setback from the first floor. You've asked for a west
Yes.
side yard setback.
Okay.
That's only for the first floor.
Yes, 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 that, I see what you're saying, yes.
Is there a separate setback for the second floor?
No, it's, it would be the same one.
So if what you requested was approved today, you could actually move the second floor closer to the property line?
Unless we tied it to the drawings.
Yeah, I see, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do that, yeah.
Okay, that's clear. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions? No, okay, I think we have another speaker. We've got the neighbor from number three. In person, all right, okay, let's, uh, have you down. Please state your name and address for the record, and, uh, we'll get the five minutes up on the screen for you.
Hello, good morning. Thank you for seeing me this morning. So, uh, I'm objecting to, sorry, first of all, my name is Stefan Yonescu. I am the neighbor to the north of this property in number three Leona. I'm the owner, resident of the home. Number one, I do support garden suites, but I'm opposed to this particular one. Uh, there's a couple of reasons for this objection. Number one, which is the most important one for myself, is that the plans and pictures that I have shown you aren't actually reflecting the reality of the situation that exists right now. What my neighbor has done is that when they excavated the home, they took the, the dirt and they raised the elevation of their property. The previous property went from the street into a gentle slope that budded my own property. So it's a very gentle slope. What they did is they raised the front by about a meter and a half to two meters. If you can look at my pictures I provided for you, I think I provided a bunch of pictures. You can see that the footing of the property, sorry, the garage that they built here, this is what I'm looking at from my own backyard. You can see, there's a couple more pictures. It's roughly six feet higher than the ground. That means that the new building that they're proposing to build is going to be three stories higher than the, than my side. It doesn't make any sense. I don't think that this is allowed property, sorry, garden suites. So, I'm, propose, sorry, I'm opposed to the following things. I'm opposed to number two, which is the proposed north side setback of 0.4 meters. These guys are building a huge home, they already have a huge home. Now they want to build an additional garden suite. They're asking for more space, which I'm not sure if that's such a great idea. Number six, which is the proposed height, which is the most important part for me. The height of this building is going to be humongous. It has a huge impact on my privacy and enjoyment of my backyard. Number seven, the proposed encroachment, uh, to the north side setback for the eaves is a huge problem because already when they raised the level of the, their side, they basically created a runoff of the water into my property, creating a swamp in my backyard. Now we're going to have all these eave troughs, adding all this extra water that's going to be going to my backyard as well. Number eight, sorry, number nine, this total maximum floor area of the building. It's quite big already. I don't actually believe that it fits on the existing footing that they poured for the garage. I think they will have to alter what they have done. Maybe I'm wrong, but I didn't take the measurements on this. I did not see the plan until today, so I'm not quite sure. There's another thing that I really need to bring up because actually was brought up by my neighbor's representative here. Trees are not affected. This is not true. If you look at the picture that I provided to you, on the property line, there was a bunch of smaller trees. They're not protected by the city of Toronto. However, when my neighbor was digging, they dug right beside the trees. They, like, literally ripped out all the roots of these trees. There's about 10 of them. So it created an unsafe situation in my own backyard where I could not let my kids play in the backyard because I'm afraid these trees are going to be knocked over by a strong wind. So I spoke to the neighbor. I have asked him to remove it as a safety hazard. Up until now, he has refused. It's been more than a year. I'm so sorry, but the way these guys are proposing and building, it's unsafe. I literally had to call the city of Toronto to have an inspector show up for them to install a safety fence. There was about a meter and a half down for the footing that they dug. They left the hole open with metal rods sticking out. There's no way, like, my kids could easily just walk over, one of them could slip and fall on top of all of that. It's, it's very, I don't know, irresponsible. I do not support this application. I think it does not keep within our neighborhood. Nobody wants a huge building sticking up three stories above their backyard. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Um, do any questions? Okay, no questions at this time. I believe we...
Yes, uh, real quick there, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
What you're saying, sir, is they regraded the lot, and now they're asking for a height measured from the regraded portion of the lot as opposed to... Because when I look on the survey, it's about 64 centimeter difference between your backyard and theirs. It changes a little bit here and there.
If you look at the picture that I showed to you, like, there's a third picture that I'm sitting in front of right there. If you look this way, this is me standing in front about three meters away from, four meters away from their thing. It's taller than me. It's almost taller than me. This is what I'm seeing, so from this.
Is that the foundation of the garage? Uh, I'll ask, I'm going to verify with the applicant, but, uh, is that, that's the, the foundation of the garage that was approved?
That's right.
Okay, and it's in, it's the foundation, it's in its entirety, meaning it's, it's a full, it's a full foundation?
So the foundation was poured. When I called the city inspector, he said that they would verify that it was poured correctly when they were doing the final inspections. Okay, I'm not sure, but the final inspection for the property. I guess they built a home and they never inspected the garage. I don't know if this garage is inspected or not, but I'm not sure if it was done correctly or not. However, it's too high. So on top of this, you're going to be adding another two stories?
Okay, well, I, I have some questions, clarifying questions for the agent. Well, you can maybe understand the existing condition a little bit better.
Like, you shouldn't be able to raise the level of your property beside your neighbor, like, that's, that's silly.
You're, you're not actually, and if they did, you're not actually. You can't just change the grade of your property in order to make your...
That's what they did.
Well, there's a different avenue to deal with that. If, if they have, it's a through Toronto building, like, you can't, you can't just raise the, change the grade in order to, you know...
I've, there is already a case on this. I've already called the city and asked for it.
Any approval, should it be approved, would be based off of, uh, working off the, the, the existing grade. You can't, you can't just change the grade like that. And if they did, they'd be required to either get subsequent approval for that grade change or put it back.
But we're in a ravine here. It's like, I don't know if this is a ravine, but I think it's a ravine. Like, they've changed the, the flow of the water. It used to go from their property, it used to go towards the south, sorry, towards the east side, towards the ravine side.
Sure, we'll, we'll, we'll get some further clarification on this. Any other questions?
I'm good for now.
Yes, Mr. Nipoll.
There is a couple of, there's a couple more pictures I submitted, actually. That show where, where the level of the property is compared. No, it's not. It's another four, five feet down, sir, in the back. In the northern side, it's another four, five feet down. It's, it's totally wrong, like, you can't do this.
Let's, let's give the agent a chance to respond. Uh, it, it may be just a clarifying matter. Um, but the, but the neighbor's point is well taken. Okay, um, do we have any other speakers on this item before we go back to the agent?
To the chair, we were informed by the other neighbor that they're no longer interested in speaking.
Okay, very good. All right, let's have the applicant back. I want to give them an opportunity to respond. Um, I have some questions because typically when you pour a basement foundation, you're coming up slightly, just slightly above grade. It's not to say that you can't pour your footings higher and incorporate them into your front or, or into your main walls, which may be the case here, but perhaps some clarification, uh, would be helpful for myself and other members.
Yeah, sure, thank you. Um, so if the site plan shows that there's not going to be any entrances from the west wall of the existing garage to the area where there's a laundry room and that sort of thing, so that footing will stay the same and then there'll be a, a small addition on the west side just to allow for some residential uses for the second floor unit.
Is the intention, like, let's pull up the drawing. Are you, and just in relationship to the photo, so the top of the concrete, um, foundation that we see in the photo, the poured foundation, where does that fall on the elevation? If we can pull the elevation up?
Where, are you, you're saying where the current?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, when I see the photo, I'm looking at the top of a concrete foundation that's roughly three to four feet above the ground. Where does that, the top of that foundation fall on this elevation?
I guess like three or feet, four feet up the first wall of the...
Okay, so it does incorporate, the foundation does incorporate like the first
Yes.
floor. You don't think so?
I don't think so because when I look at the finished floor elevation on the drawings, it's 9926. The gentleman's backyard is 9696. So it's about 2.3 meter difference between the finished floor elevation of the proposed garage on the, on the drawing.
Right.
And his backyard, so it's about 2.3 meter difference.
Fair enough, okay.
Whether that's an existing condition or a condition that came after the fact, I can't say, but that, that's the math.
Everything done up until this point has been approved through a building permit and through a review of the grading by the city and everything. And there's been an inspection done by the city, and they've said that everything is up to code. So, and also all the, like, drainage issues and that sort of thing. Um, I think those will get resolved through this building permit stage as well, and yeah, everything matches the plans that were approved.
Yes, Mr. Nipoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but the reality is, um, these drawings are provided to assist us in determining what you're proposing and to assist the neighbors in evaluating what you're proposing. And this drawing is not correct. That's not where the grade's going to be. You, you, I mean, the fact that you've had approvals previously for building permit, that's fine, but you're here asking for variances to build this particular garden suite. The reality, the concern I have is that the drawings that we have before us are not accurate. They don't show, they do not accurately show what the impact is of your proposal on the property to the, let me see, to the north.
Yeah, just to be more clear, like, on that drawing, it actually states concrete foundation in and around the... first floor height, I guess the garage height there. And then above it shows stone and looks like a block wall. But when I look at the photo, I see a footing or foundation that in the relationship to the established grade is very different from that. That to me is no more than a foot above the ground. But in the photo, I'm looking at three to four foot difference.
The.
You see the, you see the ground and you see a concrete foundation. That's if that's the wall we're looking at. If we go to the photo that the neighbor pulled up, it's quite, it's quite different.
Like, the building's relations on the plan are like are, is it okay if I, if I come back to the question?
Yeah, we might have to, I mean, like if you pull, I don't know if you need to see the photo again. But it's, the the foundation is coming, isn't the the relationship of the top of the foundation as it is right now to the ground is very different from what you're presenting in a drawing to us. Without question.
Is it okay if I can? I just want to be able to confirm the information and come back with the correct info.
Yeah, I I, fair enough. I think some clarification might be needed because there are variances for height. And there also are variances for angular planes. There's a lot of things that, you know, so I I personally, I have some concern with respect to the impact. Particularly if the drawings are not aligning with what I'm seeing as the existing condition. So some clarification would be helpful. Why don't we?
Like, I was, I was on the site today and it looked level, like.
What looked level, the?
This, the, where the footing is and where the other property is.
Hold on, hold on, you can't interrupt. The the relation, I'm just saying, your drawing doesn't reflect what I'm seeing in the photo.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, I think, I don't think the technical aspects of your drawing are incorrect. If you looked at the elevation from your property line, that's what it looked like. But when you back up a little bit and you see it from your neighbor's property line, you're very likely to see a fairly significant dip. Right? So it depends where you take your elevation from. It's like a cross section, right?
Yeah.
So if you back up, it's not actually a cross section, but if you were back up and take the section of the land, you would notice, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, then it would have to be backfilled. And we're not looking at, like, the photo is misrepresented because it's missing all the backfill.
It's, I don't think it's, I don't think they did it on purpose, but it doesn't show the context of the neighbor's elevating, grading and elevation change. And and it's a kind of, it's a strange situation, to be honest, because they haven't approved garage from their previous applications at this finished floor elevation, right? Which they're legally entitled to build.
Yeah, well, without the second.
But without the second story.
That's the concern.
They should put a retaining wall. I mean, that's, that's a building problem that they have to deal with on site.
Issue, issue for me is that the neighbor next door is relying on these drawings for a manipulation of the impact. This is not.
Oh, it doesn't show the context.
It it sounds like you like to get some clarification from your client with respect to the elevation drawing as it relates to the photograph of the, is that fair to say?
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would just add that, like, the, we're proposing eight foot ceilings, like on the second floor, that you can't go any lower than what we're proposing. It's, it's unfortunate that that's the grade of the of the site and that like it takes into account the north part of the site.
Can I just raise one point? It's not just the grade of the site, though. You're asking for a number of variances. And one of them is angular plane. If the bylaw was to stand as it is and you didn't get the variances you requested, fifty percent of your illegal because it penetrates the angular plane. There are huge penetrations of the angular plane on this. So I don't think we're talking about a minor detail. The 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 issue, the things that you're asking for today are substantial. But we need to be assured of the impact on the neighbors and the community. And that's not clear. The what's before us indicates one thing. I would argue that what would actually exist is something else.
The, the, like, the angular plane. Actually, okay, um, where, is it okay if I?
Let's stand, I'm going to stand down this item. I I I think it's only fair that you just, I want to provide you an opportunity to speak with your client and
Okay.
I I I can tell that you're being put on the spot and I think you need a minute just to, maybe even it'll help you provide a little bit of clarification to the questions we have with respect to the photograph in relationship to the the elevation. So let's stand in down this item. We'll come back to it. We'll jump over to item number three, but we'll we'll come back to this one shortly. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, so let's, we're going to move on to item number three, stand down item number two right now. Item number.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, uh, we have the agent for the deferral, if you want to do that first.
Ah, very good.
It was an item, actually, item number nine.
Okay, let's see, is that the only deferral this morning?
For this morning, yes, that's correct.
Let's deal with the deferral request.
Because there's a number of speakers, so we might as well let them know.
Okay. Okay, so item number nine, two thirty seven Glenview Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a new detached dwelling with a rear deck. We've got a width, east side yard set, eve projection, FSI, rear platform area, building height and main wall height. On file, I've got material from the applicant, letter from two thirty nine Glenview, letter of concern from two twenty nine, two thirty two, two thirty one, two thirty three, two thirty five, two thirty nine, two forty four and two forty eight Glenview Avenue. A staff report from community planning, a memo from transportation services and that's what I have on file. Do we have the agent with us?
Morning, Mr. Chair, committee members. My name is Enzo Lacassano from HTWG.
Good morning. Your address?
Is, uh, one, sorry, one, two, four, five Caledonia Road in Toronto.
Okay, and my understanding is you're requesting a deferral?
Yeah, we we had reached out to the neighbors prior to the hearing. The neighbors responded with some concerns. We later received comments from planning. Uh, so we would like to take this opportunity to defer it in order to review the concerns and have a meeting with the the neighbors that have submitted the objection letters.
Okay, uh, very good. Okay, any questions? No? Okay, we've got some other speakers. Let's get them online with us.
Sorry, uh, Mr. Chair, we also issued a letter to the, to this, to the people that, uh, the objection letter that we were going to defer this application as well. We hand delivered letters to notify them.
Okay, very good, noted. All right, uh, we've got a number of speakers on this item, so let's. I'm going to ask, uh, let's get, let's pull them up. We're going, we're only going to speak to the request for deferral. Okay? Do we have a Mr. Kelly online? Or in person? Is anybody here in person for item number nine?
Through the chair, we have Doug Kelly unmuted.
Mr. Kelly? Hello, Mr. Kelly? All right, we have another speaker?
Through the chair, Ivan Ho Ma, we have sent you a request to unmute.
Hello?
Through the chair, Ivan Ho Ma, we see that you are unmuted. Please, you may please proceed with your, yeah, you may speak.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Your name and address for us?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Ivan Ho Ma. We are the owners of two, three, nine Glenview Avenue. The properly, property immediately west of the subject property. Um, I want to make clear today, I have not met Francisco Vincent. I've only met with his mother, who is not the owner.
Mr. Chair, just a reminder, we're dealing with deferral only.
Yep.
Sorry, are we, are we dealing with, what do you want me to say? Or do you want me to sort of?
We're dealing with a deferral request, so the the applicant is come before us and asked to defer this item to another day to provide an opportunity to discuss with staff and the neighbors. So just asking whether you're supportive of that deferral request or not.
Well, I, I mean, the plans are going to have to change pretty dramatically, right? So, um, yeah, I guess I would be supportive.
Okay, any questions? All right, very good. Uh, next speaker?
Through the chair, neighbors from two thirty one, two thirty five, two forty one and two forty four Glenview Avenue have not signed into WebEx.
Okay, we have any other speakers on this item?
Through the chair, we still have Doug Kelly unmuted.
Mr. Kelly? Doesn't seem like he's with us. All right, let's move on from this. I'm going to go back to the agent. I don't think we need a response from the agent, actually. I think we can take this into committee for a decision. Unless the agent has anything else to add, which. Okay, let's take this into committee for decision. Yes, Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move deferral of the application as requested to allow the applicant to meet with planning and affected residents.
Okay, do I have a second, there? Yes, Mr. Kaboo, all in favor? That is unanimous. The deferral request is granted. Okay, so that completes item number nine. Let's go back now to item number two, number one, Leona Drive. Hopefully. Oh, they're outside. Let's give them some more time then. Okay. All right, so, uh, let's deal with item number three, fifty eight Baycrest Avenue. This is an application to permit an increase in driveway width and a reduction in front yard soft landscaping. Requires two variances. Uh, as noted in the purpose for driveway width and front yard landscaping, soft landscaping, I should say. Got material from the applicant, staff report from community planning, a memo from transportation and a joint letter of objection from nearby residents. Do we have the applicant with us?
Through the chair, Sheilin Wang, we have sent you a request to.
Ms. Wang? Do we have the agent with us for fifty eight Baycrest Avenue?
Through the chair, Sheilin Wang, once again, we have sent you an unmute request, so if you could please unmute yourself from your end.
No luck? We have the agent back or? No, not yet. We we get back to the item, I'll. I, we're not on that item. Can't have you speak at a turn.
Mr. Chair, I just want to mention for everyone who is logged on to WebEx now, our functions have changed so that if you are a speaker, you need to unmute yourself if you are logged in virtually. Previously, we were able to unmute you.
No, Ms. Wang? Okay. All right, we're going to have to stand down item number three. Let's move on to item number four. Eighty seven Brendan Hill Court, Building C. All right. Believe this item also is similar to item number five. Okay, so item number four. The purpose of this application is a proposal to permit the projection of maintenance utility enclosures within the separation distance of buildings. And the variance relates to the purpose of the application. On file, I have material from the applicant. Do we have the agent or applicant with us?
Through the chair, Michaela, we have sent you a request to unmute, so if you could just unmute yourself on your end.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, good morning.
Hi, sorry, I'm just trying to find the function to also turn on my video, if that's an option. If not, that that's okay. Good morning, uh, Mr. Chair.
Through the chair, we have enabled your.
Okay. Great, thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Here we go.
Members of committee, staff and members of the public, I hope you could hear me all right. I'm getting a bit of a delay on my end. So just let me know.
We can hear you loud and clear. Can you just state your address for us?
Yes, so my name is Michaela Batacola. My company's address is five eight two Lancaster Street West Kitchener.
Okay, I don't see any objection to this item. Uh, and I also, we don't have any reports from staff. Given that, it seems relatively straightforward, given that, and I presume you'll be speaking on the next item. Perhaps you could just give us a very, very brief kind of overview of what you're asking for today. I presume item number five is is very similar in nature. So perhaps just a very brief presentation, just to explain what's going on, uh, would be helpful.
Yeah, sure, of course. Um, I did submit a presentation. It might be helpful to pull that up just so I can show what we're looking at here. And and if we want to just skip through right to the meat and potatoes of the variance, we can scroll to the next slide. Okay. we can scroll to the next slide. Okay. So essentially, the requested variance is required to permit utility cabinet enclosures to be excluded from the calculations of separation distances. Back in 2022, we got a minor variance which established a 4.5 meter separation distance between the two buildings, which is just the image on the top right. Since our, the owners have been going through the building permit process, things have been refined. And they now have these utility cabinets, which are technically form part of the main wall, so they are now included in the calculation of separation distances. So they now then encroach into that 4.5 meter requirement we currently have. So we're just requesting to remove that requirement since there's now about four meter distance in that separation distance. And the proposed exclusion is very minor, technical in nature. It doesn't impact the intent of the separation distances, which is of course to provide relief between buildings. They don't create any privacy or shadowing concerns. And in the cover letter we submitted, it's my professional opinion, they are minor in nature, and they satisfy the four tests of section 45.1 of the Planning Act. And the next two slides too, if you just want to... Oh, sorry.
No, of course.
Just if you want to see a visual of what the elevations look like of these cabinets, they're just provided there.
Yeah, that was actually my question. So the red line that's drawn over demonstrates where the projections, the variances relate to the projections at the ground level.
Exactly, and so they're just... Correct, yeah. So they're required just for the cabinets to be fully enclosed. They require to be enclosed just for, obviously, to protect the utilities against weather and for security purposes. They'll be constructed of the same materials as the building, so it'll help disguise the servicing and, of course, enhance the overall design of the building.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Kniffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think anyone would disagree with what you're trying to do and to make the the change as compatible as possible with the buildings. Would you have any concern if we tied the approval to the plan that you, the site plan? My reason for that is, the way the request is worded, it would appear that down the road, anybody could come in with any kind of maintenance, security, mechanical equipment, and place it in this walkway. That's not your intention, but I'd like to safeguard against future introductions into that walkway. So I'm wondering if you'd have any difficulty if we tied it to the plan?
No, no difficulty there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? All right, no questions. Let's take this into committee for decision.
I'm good with it. It's purely technical in nature.
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward. You have a motion, Mr. Bartolo?
Put forward the motion there, Mr. Chair. I'll put forward a motion to approve this application and make it subject and be developed substantially in accordance with the plan submitted to the committee.
Okay, great. And second...
Mr. Chair, sorry, I just need a clarification. There's a number of plans that were submitted? Is it site plan?
I will select the plan and date. Bear with me for a second.
Thank you.
So be, as noted on the site plan submitted to the committee, noted issued for minor variance application dated August 29, 2024.
Okay, I have a second there. Yes, Mr. Kniffel, all in favor? That is unanimous. Motion carries. The application is approved with condition. Let's deal with item number five, which I think is very similar in nature. Same address, 87 Brandon Hill Court. This is Building D. Again, this is a proposal to permit projection of maintenance utility enclosures within the separation distance between buildings. Variances relate to the purpose of the application, as just stated. On file, I've got material from the applicant. We've got the applicant with us.
Yes, hello again. Same...
Name and address for the record.
Sorry, of course. Michaela Batacola, address 582 Lancaster Street West, Kitchener.
Okay, I'm going to ask my colleagues whether or not they require a presentation on this item. I'm seeing not. So if it's okay with you, we can move right into committee for a decision for you.
Of course, thank you.
And I should ask, any issue with respect to this being tied to plan?
No.
Should we prove it? Perhaps we can just identify if we were to tie this to plan, which plan we would tie it to? Site plan? Okay, all right, very good. Okay, let's take this into committee for decision. Yes, Mr. Kaboo?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would like to put forward a motion to adopt this application as submitted, subject to the site plan.
Okay, very good. Second. Yes, Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. Motion is approved. The application is approved with condition.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Now, do we have... Do we have the agent back? Not yet. Yeah. I should ask, staff, do we have the agent or applicant for item number three, 58 Baycrest Avenue?
Through the chair, we do. We, Sheilin Wang, I have sent you a request to unmute.
Good morning. Hello? It looks like we have an issue connecting with Ms. Wang. Yeah. Ms. Wang, are you with us?
Through the chair, Sheilin Wang. We see that you are connected by phone. On your phone's keypad, please press the star button and six to unmute yourself.
No luck? All right, I'm going to come back to item three one more time. We've come back, we've been on this item twice, and haven't been able to get ahold of the agent. So I'm, we're going to go to item two. I'm going to come back to item three, but I don't know, I'll have to ask staff how to deal with this. If the agent or applicant doesn't show, or we can't get him online, we're just going to have to...
We're going to have to ask the applicant to hang up, leave, and call one of us. We can put her on a speakerphone.
Okay. While we're doing that, I do see that we have the agent back for item number two. I apologize to everybody for us jumping around, but I'm just trying to be mindful of our time here. So let's now go back to item number two, one Leona Drive. We've got the agent back to clarify for us some of the discrepancies that were pointed out between the, one of the elevation drawings and one of the existing site photos.
Thanks for your patience. So I'm going to request a deferral so that we can get that information to you and show the grading differences on the drawing in a more, in a way that makes it very clear what the impacts will be in that and that sort of thing.
Okay, all right. I think that's a good idea. Before we do that, I'm going to ask the neighbor whether he'd be amenable to deferral, but he's got to come down to the mic, state his name and address for the record, and let him, and I'll give him an opportunity to speak to that request only.
Hi, my name is Stefan Janescu. I am the owner of three Leona Drive, the property to the north of number one Leona Drive.
All right, do you support the deferral request?
I'm sorry, I do not.
You don't?
I have put up with a very long time for these guys to build this property in inconvenience to my children and my entire family. We cannot use our backyard really, really well. I believe that what they're proposing is going to actually impact us long term in the future, not just short term.
Okay.
I believe that it's shown clearly from the pictures that the north, like the elevations that are given, the provided you do today are wrong. I have further pictures, actually. I just got a few more pictures right now. If you want me to present, I can present to you.
Nope, just speaking to the deferral request today.
Understood.
Thank you. Okay, so we have the immediate neighbor objecting to the deferral request. I'm going to have the agent back. If, just give you an opportunity to rebut in, again, just in response to the request for deferral. Just to clarify for us, perhaps you could just restate specifically what the reason for the deferral request is?
Great, excuse me. The reason for the deferral is so that we can provide additional clarity on the grading and the... Yeah, and update the drawings so that it shows that more clearly. I understand this has like been a really hard process with the neighbor, and I'm like really sorry that it's been that way and I, yeah, I just... This way we can like even send you the drawings and then hopefully it's something we can work on.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm hearing from the agent that they're, in addition to revising or providing some clarification, they will reach out to the immediate neighbor in hopes that, you know, we can make some progress on that front as well. Okay, that said, let's take this into committee for a decision on the request for deferral. Yes, Mr. Kaboo?
Yeah, I would like to put forward a motion so that we can approve the request for adjournment to allow the applicant to to work on the drawing and all the applications, and then have a meaningful discussion with the neighborhood to, to try to get back to us as soon as possible.
Very good. Okay, do I have a second there for the motion? Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. The request for deferral is granted. Okay. Staff, members, do we need a relief break at this time? Yes? Okay, let's take 10. The time is now 11:53. We will resume at 12:04 PM. Thank you. All right, everybody, we are back. We are going to jump back to item number three. This is the third time we're coming back to this item. So hopefully, we can get a hold of the agent. The address is 58 Baycrest Avenue. This is an application to permit an increase in driveway width and a reduction in the front soft yard, front yard soft landscaping. Okay, let's get the agent online.
Please introduce yourself.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, perfect. So my name is Jimmy Wen. I'm the agent of homeownership property at 58 Baycrest Avenue.
Your address?
58 Baycrest Avenue.
Your address?
My address is 16 East Nickel Way.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm just, I'm going to ask as well. I do see another speaker on this item. Are they, are they related? Are you both?
Alvin Kirk.
Because I see a Mr. Kirk.
Sorry, I cannot.
Different address, are you?
They're Alvin Kirk.
They're both agents.
He's also an agent for your application or not? The same?
I'm the agent.
So one, we have one or two speakers on this item? One. All right, Ms. Wen. I see a report from staff, planning staff, asking for refusal on this item. I am going to ask for a presentation from you. Get the clock up. Floor is yours whenever you're ready.
You might repeat, I cannot hear clearly.
Of course. So I see a report from community planning recommending refusal of the application. So because of that, I'm going to ask for a presentation from you. Also, I see that transportation is requesting deferral. So if you can speak to those two requests, that would be helpful. We'll get the five minutes up and the floor is yours, okay?
Okay, understood. Okay, can I start?
You can, anytime.
Okay, sorry, yeah. I'm very sorry about the inconvenience. So we are seeking approval for a driveway width of 7.57 meters, which exists by law permitted maximum of 3.32 meters. Additionally, we are requesting relief from the bylaw that requires 75% of front yard landscaping to be soft landscaping as the property currently has only 24.4% in soft landscaping. And here are our key points supporting this request. First, while the front yard softcape was below the required 75%, the backyard currently is fully grass as shown in the photos previously submitted. The homeowner also has no plans for future renovations to the house. We believe it's reasonable to consider the landscaping across the entire property has meeting softscape and genetic niche, ensuring ample green space and functionality. And also, the second point is the widened driveway has been there like almost a year already and the front yard tree remains healthy, showing that the landscape has not been negatively affected by this change. This suggests that the visual and environmental impact may be less significant than initially anticipated by the planning department. Also, a third reason is the parking constraints. The property is located near a hospital, which limits street parking during the day. This has created ongoing inconvenience for the homeowner and visitors. A wider driveway would help solve these constraints by offering essential on-site parking. And also, the last reason is a financial burden that I want to emphasize, the driveway widening is already completed. Reversing these changes would impose financial hardship on the homeowner given the cost associated with modifying the current structure. And we respectfully request that the committee consider these factors and prove our vibrant request. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, no questions. Steph, I'm going to ask again. Speaker on this item? Be a second speaker, but it says agent.
Through the chair, we're just going to attempt to contact them right now.
Okay, very good. Any luck? Sure.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have Alvin. I have him on my phone. I'm just going to put him up on the, on my microphone right now. Okay, thank you.
Alvin, go ahead, but before you start, can you please give your name and address, please?
Yeah, it's Alvin Kirk, AD Nepton Drive.
Okay, thank you. And you have some comment you'd like to make on this item, sir?
Sorry, it's very hard to hear what you just said, if you don't mind.
Of course, I'll repeat myself. Is there a comment that you would like to make?
Yeah, there is a comment. And basically, if you, I didn't see the letter that was presented from the neighbors, which is stating very important points about this application. The neighbors, all the adjacent neighbors to this property are against this proposal. First of all, this proposal, they didn't ask permission and they didn't ask for, from any of the neighbors before they did it. This house was purchased a little bit over a year ago and they, without no permission, no applications, no, nothing was contacted to the city by laws. They just constructed this humongous driveway. They used to have six cars parked on the driveway through the day and night and the owner doesn't live at that property. This property is being rented out. There is, even though it's next to the Baycrest Avenue, Baycrest Hospital, there is 10 seconds away, meaning next block, there is parking on the street. There is a parking, parking lot which people could pay and park in the back of Baycrest Hospital, where currently all the renters in this house are parking their cars and the parking there is $90 a month. And I just assumed that the owner, and again, I'm speaking here from the whole neighborhood, from all the people signed on the letter. If you don't mind to pull up the, like, I'm not sure. I'm speaking on the telephone, so I can't see if the letter was pulled up on the screen. But the letter was signed by all the neighbors. And as you could see, there is many points that were brought up showing that this is going to become as a commercial site and it's going to bring up more of these properties to be bought and constructed. And it's going to definitely have a big impact on the family-friendly, kids-friendly neighborhood. There is around 20 kids in the immediate property surrounding this property. And we would like to ask not only to refuse this application, but make sure that the bylaws are called. We were already contacted bylaws many times. They told them not to park six cars anymore, only two, as it was originally before they purchased this house. And, but, but they never took apart the big driveway they constructed. There is almost no green grass left. And basically, that's, I think with this message, I'm just going to end the, I'm saying, the whole conversation. And I hope this is pretty understandable. And I hope the committee will consider the neighbors and not the owner who doesn't even live in the area and who wants to basically just, just finish up this family-friendly neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kirk. All right, any questions? Okay, no questions. Let's take this back to the agent for a response.
They want you to respond to the comments.
This time. Sorry, I basically didn't hear anything cause it's through the phone.
Do we have the agent? Yes. Ms. Wang, are you with us?
Yes, I am, but unfortunately, I cannot hear like the previous conversation because it's through the phone. Yeah, but like, if we can postpone, can I kind of reply later if possible?
Through you, Mr. Chair, can she clarify what she means by postpone?
Can you clarify what do you mean by postponing? Are you asking for deferral?
Are you asking, are you requesting a deferral of this application?
Yeah, yeah, cause I basically cannot hear anything at this moment.
You cannot hear anything and that's why you're requesting a deferral?
Yeah, or I can reply later, maybe.
I, Mr. Chair, sorry, I don't, I don't know what trying later would help, how that would help. It's up, it's up to the applicant what they want to do. I would, I would caution a deferral only because I don't know what we would get out of this. Unless the applicant is prepared to give a reason or reasons why they're requesting a deferral.
Yes, please. Yeah, Ms. Wang, the reason for your deferral request?
First, I, yeah, first, I, I was, sorry, I received a memo from the Transportation Services that maybe we should provide more detailed information so they can make a decision. Second, basically, I, it's because of our end technical issue that I barely can hear any comments at the meeting. So it's better if I can circle back and re rehear everything and then we can provide anything, any information that is out that may approve our application.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just to also note that transportation also requested a deferral. So it may not be a bad thing, but I would really perhaps suggest the agent, if the deferral is granted, that they return to the chambers in person next time to present.
Okay. All right, I'm going to ask my members, I, I personally, I don't see any reason to support a deferral at this time. I don't, I have all the information I need before me to make a decision. But I'm gonna ask my colleagues whether or not they may be supportive of a request for a deferral. Yes, Mr. Nitfo?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you. I don't see a reason for a deferral either.
Okay. All right. So we did, we did have a concern that the agent was not able to hear the neighbor that spoke in opposition. I, I question whether we need to have the neighbor back to repeat his concerns for the agent so that we can proceed with this. So let's, let's get the other speaker back.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I can try, but I'm not, because we're, she's having trouble connecting. She's listening through a cell phone. I don't know if it's gonna help.
Mr. Chairman, the other speaker essentially told us what's in the letter of objection. It's already here on the agenda. So it's already heard, his comments are printed.
Right. If the, if the agent would like, we can put them on the screen if she's able to follow along.
Okay, let's, let's summarize. I think it's fairly straightforward. I don't think this is an application that requires further, needs to get dragged out any longer, frankly. Staff, if we can pull up the letter of concern from the neighbor.
Can you see the YouTube stream?
I, let me try. So basically, I didn't, let me try to log in first.
The neighbor's comment was whatever was written on the letter of objection. So if you have seen that before, or you can see it on YouTube right now, that's what committee members asking you to respond.
I see, cause I didn't see the neighbor's rejection before. Is it, I think it's online, right?
Yes.
Okay, let me quickly open it for a little bit. I think I only see the transportation memo before.
Through you, Mr. Chair, maybe while the agent, because it is posted online and visible at this point, why don't we stand this down, give the agent an opportunity to look at it? I, I tend to agree that if you are, if you have all the information you need to make a decision at this point and you don't see the merits of a deferral, that is up to you. If there is nothing you believe that would sway you at this point, but out of fairness, we can give, we can stand this down if you wish, to give the agent some time to read the neighbor's concerns that it is documented. And maybe we can circle back and make this perhaps the last item of the morning.
Okay, yes, I would agree. I'm gonna stand this down. I just wanna make clear, this is the third time I'm standing down this item. So I, I'm in a very short leash with this. Let's stand it down. It's gonna be the last item of the morning. The, the neighbor's objection was filed and posted in the public file. It is there and it does outline the neighbor's concerns. So when we do come back to this file, I'm going to ask the, gonna provide the agent an opportunity to respond to the neighbor's letter of concern, just for clarification, okay?
Okay.
Okay, let's, we're gonna, we gotta keep moving forward. So let's move on to item number six. Three fifty-three Brook Avenue. The purpose of this application is to convert the existing two-story detached dwelling to a daycare center. Also proposed is a new entrance and playground in the rear yard along with a side canopy structure connecting to one fifty-seven Falkirk Street. Okay, and on file, we've got material from the applicant as well as a letter of concern from twelve Terravon and a report from Urban Forestry. Have the agent or applicant with us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Your name and address, please.
So my name is Jeff Holt. I'm from Turner Fleischer Architects, sixty-seven Les Mill Road. I'm representing the, the owner of one fifty-seven Falkirk and three fifty-three Brook Avenue.
Okay. All right, let's get the clock up on the screen. There are, there is some opposition to this, so I would like to hear a presentation from you. And the floor is yours whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time today. And the proposal that we have here for three fifty-three Brook Avenue is an existing detached dwelling. The intention is to extend the place of worship from one fifty-seven Falkirk to the three fifty-three by way of extension of a canopy. The intention of that is for the daycare use component of one fifty-seven Falkirk. One fifty-seven Falkirk did go through committee in twenty eighteen and received some variances that were all approved at that time. And as part of this application here, we have received a request which you are already well aware of, and we have three variances that are being requested here today. One being the place of worship does not have or frontline or abut a major street. And as part of one fifty-seven Falkirk, the existing place of worship on site there today also does not abut a major street that is currently zoned under R four and R six of one fifty-seven Falkirk. This is an RD zone, but that, that also does not abut a major street. In the RD zone, the place of worship is permitted and to not have more than two thousand square meters is the second variance, whereas the combined gross floor area of the three fifty-three Falkirk and one fifty-seven, or sorry, one fifty-seven Falkirk and three fifty-three Brook, the combined area of both of those will be twenty-six eighty square meters. And we would just like to clarify that in twenty eighteen, when one fifty-seven Falkirk received approval of its variances, at that time, the approval of that was based on a building area of twenty-two sixty-one and the allowed at that time was thirteen ninety-three meters squared. So the delta in the gross floor area at that time was an additional sixty-two percent of the permitted, which was approved. And now with the combined area of this, the delta variance is thirty-four percent in excess. So it's even a less of a variance than what was previously approved. The last variance that we are here today to talk about is the side lot line on the easterly side and the southerly side lot line, which is abutting the property of the, the letter of concern received. The building is an existing building that is currently there. And so we are currently facing an existing condition. And aside from moving the building, we are hoping that the variance will be considered still applicable and that we would receive in favor. And the, the rear lot line is also, we consider not to be egregious in the variance of what is permitted versus what is being proposed. But we are also flexible and open to the concerns received from the neighboring owner to work with them to provide, if, if necessary, to, to appease and support them. We would be willing to provide the three-meter landscape strip along the southernly property to, to be good neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, no questions. All right, staff, it looks like we have some other speakers on this item.
Through the chair, we have Menachem Gansberg. They are the owner. We're just going to unmute them since there's one minute left, just in case.
Hello?
Through the chair, Menachem Gansberg. We see you are connected by phone. If you received a request to unmute, please press star six on your device to unmute yourself.
No luck, perhaps?
Through the chair, we're just going to move on to Peter. Peter, we sent you a request to unmute.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, chair members of the committee. Peter Jakovic, I live at twelve Fabian Place, Toronto.
Okay. And your interest in this item?
Sorry, I'm, I'm a registered professional planner. I've got twenty-five years in land and planning, land development and planning background. I'm here on behalf of Stephen Lippfeld, who could not attend the meeting. Regarding his interest, he's a owner and resident at twelve Kurven Street. Kurven is that property immediately south of, of three fifty-three Brook. And it's approximately thirty-seven feet of frontage that abuts where the proposed playground structure is, is intended to go. What we're requesting today is a deferral of this agenda item in order for proper consultation to occur regarding the variances. The first, the first time the owner was made aware of this variance request was through the notice received on October twenty-eighth. Mr. Lippfeld is supportive of the synagogue in two thousand and eighteen when the variances, ten variances came forward for one fifty-seven Falkirk. A support letter was provided. Subsequently, the synagogue's been open for the last two and a half, three years. I'm gonna separate conversations regarding concerns related to outstanding site plan matters on one fifty-seven. I think that was a little bit confusing in the corresponding letter given to you. And I'm gonna focus specifically on three fifty-three. Generally supportive of the childcare provision. I think without the amount of time to properly review the plans, I think the intensification of what's being proposed on the site is, is something that is, was not necessarily anticipated. You're looking at a facility that's forty-five hundred square feet, approximately thirteen hundred square feet outdoor, forty-five hundred indoor. It's intended to accommodate seventy children. The level of intensity is, is something that's increased from the previous family residential that existed on the site back in, in twenty twenty-two. Looking at that intensity, you know, I think time would be helpful to have dialogue, to talk about sort of proper mitigation measures associated with the proximity. Because the play, the play area in the rear is intended to be at a zero lot line and directly abut twelve Kurven's rear yard. There's concerns related to sort of noise in particular. And, you know, we're looking at the options of whether or not an acoustical fence in some fashion at a higher, higher height than the six feet is, is appropriate. Looking at landscape buffers for the inclusion, looking at, you know, some site-specific matters. And, and those are conditions that I think we'd like to see as part of this kind of variance application in front of you. The, the other thing I'd like to note is in July, when the four variances were approved, the zoning notice identified a landscape requirement. And it was fifty percent soft landscaping requirement in the rear yard. The proposal indicated an eleven point two percent soft landscaping. That variance was not attained in July. That variance is not present in the variances that is requested before you today. So notionally, I feel that these variances before you are, are, could be considered premature. We are, like I said, seeking, you know, and what's the impact of, of that additional loss of soft landscaping? There are drainage concerns that are related to that. That is, is of importance, you know, considering the adjacency. So in a very short way, supportive, generally supportive of the inclusion of a daycare use, concerned with the proximity and how that integration and change from family to daycare will impact twelve uh, will impact twelve Kur, twelve Kurven. And uh, looking for time, looking for time to consult, and I I don't think a lot of time is necessary. So I'd like to request the deferral, uh, should the committee uh, decide uh, to render a decision. Unfortunately, at this time, we wouldn't be supportive of the application as it stands. Um, but we are open to dialogue and and, you know, putting our best foot forward to figure out uh, solutions and resolve uh, concerns.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you noted uh, in your presentation, there was uh, some concern with the reduction to landscaping. Um, could you be a little more specific about uh, what you're referring to specifically? I just, I do see that there was a, a variance approved uh, for the front yard back in August, but uh, today uh, before us on the public notice, there is no variance for landscaping.
So uh, so the reference I'm making, if you can hear me still, the reference I'm making is to a, to not the current zoning notice, but the zoning notice that was pro- provided dated November first, twenty twenty two. And in particular, could identify um, a variance requirement to ten, ten, five, fifty, ten, sub three. Rear yard soft landscaping for residential buildings other than apartment buildings. And it it discusses a proposed um, requirement, minimum requirement of fifty percent of the rear yard for soft landscaping. Should the lot frontage be greater than six meters, whereas the current proposal has a rear yard landscaping area of eleven point two. That variance was not captured in July, that variance is not present in the list of variances. And and as a result, you know, it 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 renders the the notional idea that additional variances might be required. And if that's the case, you know, it would be ideal to deal with that at this time. Hence more of a of of a rationale and reasoning as to why this application is premature. If if it hasn't been captured or addressed in any way, shape or form, so that it can be caught, it can be discussed. And and any, any drainage concerns related to that can be uh, you know, spoken to. You know, and 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 have the owner satisfied, it will not negatively adversely impact twelve Kurven, Kurven Street.
Okay, so you believe that there is a variance that may be missed with respect to the percentage of soft landscaping in the rear yard? Is that fair to su, to some summarize?
Short answer is yes.
Okay, uh, any questions? Yes, Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understood the applicant to say that notwithstanding it's an existing condition, which um, places certain constraints on the east property line because of the existing building, but that I believe he said they were prepared to provide a landscape buffer along the south property line, which is the, the property line that you're the most concerned with. Am I correct that even if that were done, you still have other concerns? Is that correct?
The um, the 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 short answer is specifically, there there are uh, one set, one fifty seven Falkirk. Uh, where where the, where the synagogue cur- currently uh, lies and is in operation. Uh, there there are outstanding site plan matters, for instance, that have been uh, in, you know, ongoing since uh, since its opening two and a half, three years ago. And uh, you know, when you look at the property, if you actually go on the property, uh, there's garbage bin that is exposed, it should be within an enclosure. There was a landscape buffer of one point five meters that was supposed to be planted with um, you know, uh, shrubs and and trees in order to provide some level of noise attenuation and screening. Uh, you know, and and that hasn't happened. Uh, not to say that um, you know, the property owner would would not be able, you know, not be in a position to complete. It's just one of those things where, you know, we left it to site plan and it's still not done, right? So when you look at it in terms of, of, yes.
If I might though, th- this is a variance on a different piece of property. It's a variance with on the property that's currently occupied by the house, so it's not really an avenue to investigate things that were not completed on the adjacent property.
That's, that, I agree, and and that's understandable, but what what it implies is that the daycare is ancillary to the synagogue. Uh, there's an intent that the daycare permissions are are driven by the co- combination of the two properties. So even though it's technically a separate property, the intent is that they function collectively. And it's also precedent setting. You know, we left a few matters to site plan, those matters are still unresolved. We're looking for something similar as condi- potential conditions for this variance to be enshrined, which the committee is empowered to do on three fifty three uh, Brook Street. When we look at the size of the site, the, you know, it's always a relationship of utility to size. And questionably, sometimes lot sizes are too small. But there's ways to accommodate, you know, a shortfall in lot size by accommodating uh, mitigation measures, and that's what we'd like to see written into the decision ultimately. When it comes to three fifty three Brook and and approval of these variances. And I think it needs time, we need time to determine what those proper mitigation measures are so that we can actually satisfactorily support the variances that are before you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, let's take this, do we have any other speakers before we go back to the agent?
Through the chair, we have the owner who logged off and logged back on. We're going to try again. Through the chair, Menachem Gansberg, we have sent you a request to unmute. Through the chair, looks like we're unsuccessful. Um, we do have the agent remaining on.
Let's go back to the agent.
Hello, Jeff Holt here, again Turner Flassers, sixty seven Les Mill Road. I do have a couple of comments uh, in relation to what Peter has shared. Firstly, regarding the variance regarding the landscape. The landscape and that particular variance at that time was a variance and that was discussed or being considered when this was a standalone building on a standalone site. It was not pursued and it has not pursued, as that is no longer the case, or else that variance would have come up in what we're talking about today. Regarding the matter of a deferral, the, the opportunity and time that's been provided to collect all the information to assess these variances, assess what we're doing, this is the, this is the third time that we've been to committee with um, with this site, uh, the first time being deferred. Uh, because there was a misunderstanding of both site plan approval required versus zoning. Um, and so we feel that there's been adequate time provided to collect information, to understand um, what we are doing. The, and lastly, just as you had noted, um, some of the conditions of the, you know, the the original site plan approval uh, that had been granted for one fifty seven Falkirk are still in place. And the owner is still very well intending to make full on those commitments, uh, the garbage that was there, the, up until recently, there was still construction happening on the building on one fifty seven, or, I mean, I mean, I'm I'm responding to this, even though it's it's unrelated to the variance that we have today that we are going for, but um, the client is uh, the owner is very much still um, intending to make full on those conditions of the garbage enclosure that's required, and that will still be happening. Um, if necessary, and to, to proceed with this, if they wanted to make these variances approved, or if you were wanting to make these variances, willing to make these variances approved on the condition that those those are tied, that the 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 conditions of that SP are tied to it, um, we don't have any concern with that.
Okay, any questions? Yes, Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you clarify on the site plan around the proposed playground? Um, it's denoted as soft area. Um, and that's, of course, the area that's the landscape requirement in the bylaw. Can you tell me what you have planned there? And secondly, I was trying to understand what you meant, would, I thought you said you would provide a landscape buffer along the south edge, which is the edge that um, impacts the last speaker. Could you clarify a little bit more of what you were proposing to put there?
Yes, um, I can. Um, so the the soft area that we have around this, I mean, the proposed playground area would need to be an enclosed area for the proposed playground, for the purposes of the daycare, um, for the daycare, um, daycare act, um, we would be planning to have a, an enclosed area. The proposed soft area would be either some shrubs. Um, and the intention of, you know, the letter that we had received by the concern, um, currently in our variance, it's, it's stating that we have um, one point uh, five, four or five meters that's separating between the playground and the back southernly property line. We are willing to increase that to a three meter and putting shrubs in there to provide not only some more buffer, visual barrier from the playground, potentially some more barrier from noise, um, to address the neighbors' concerns.
And is that, so you propose three meters of landscaping along the south pr- boundary and also on the I guess it's on the east where, are you proposing it there as well or just on the south?
Uh, just on the south where it's uh, immediately uh, impacting the southernly neighbor.
Okay, so you wouldn't need that variance that you've asked for, for the south property, the south strip of landscaping if you did that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are we mo- Sorry, just for clarification, are we modifying one of the variances or removing them?
Sorry, was that to me, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, it's a question for the agent. I'm specifically asking about variance number four, the soft landscaping along the southerly side of the lot.
Yeah, I think it's a modification to the variance. We would still have the variance along the east side uh, in play. Um, the modification would be to the south side only.
Right, but specifically the variance four. You're asking, it's, the the variance is requesting a reduction uh, in the saw, in the landscaping uh, strip.
Oh, my apologies.
Three meters is required, is one point four, one point five four is being proposed. So you're proposing one point five four, or are you proposing three uh, meters? I- is a variance required or being modified?
My apologies, and I'm looking at the summary of the zoning bylaw I noticed, and it it lumped both of those together into one. Um, you're correct, we would be uh, eliminating that one uh, if we were to put the three meter strip because the three, we would be in compliance with the three meter buffer along that south side.
Okay, and uh, are you, is it, am I understanding that you are making that modification on the floor?
Yes.
Okay, so staff, um, the applicant has indicated that we're going to remove variance number four from the public notice. We will comply with that. Okay, any other questions? All right, let's take this into committee for a decision. Yes, Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I believe that this application has merit, and I believe that the, the applicant has gone to some pains to integrate what he's proposing into the existing community. With regard to the landscape strip along the south property line, um, the removal of variance number four, it seems to me addresses that issue. I frankly don't see other issues with the application. I'm, I'm pleased to see this somewhat historic structure being reused as an alternate use and being um, attached, if you will, to the um, to the application, to the um, adjacent application. So I personally have no difficulty with this application. I'd like to move approval, subject to forestry condition number one.
Okay. Do we have a seconder on that motion?
I will second with a friendly amendment to remove variance number four.
Right. Mod- as modified, we're very sorry. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. The uh, application as amended is uh, approved with condition. All right. Item number seven. Ten Turnhill Crescent. This is an application to construct a new dwelling, requires a variance for lot coverage, number of stories, sorry, uh, number of platforms on a rear wall, uh, platform slash roof garden area, rear yard setback and east side yard setback. On file, I have material from the applicant, two reports from community planning, a memo from urban forestry, three, three form letters of support, a letter of concern from number five and eighty three Turnhill Crescent, as well as a letter of concern from Ms. Cronwald, as well as a uh, late letter from councillor Burnside, letters of objection from Robert and Christine Horn, Don Mills, Residence Inc., and a petition from residents organized by eighty three Turnhill. Have the agent with us?
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, in person, wonderful. Your name and address for us, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Adam Layton. I'm an associate principal with Goldberg Group. Our ad, office address is two oh nine eight Avenue Road. Uh, one item I would like to clarify before we get going, um, we had also submitted along with updated drawings on October thirty first, a uh, planning justification. Uh, we didn't see it on the AIC, I just want to make sure it was circulated to the committee.
I do have the planning rationale, I do see that. Um, it's my understanding as well that this may be a modified application, is that correct?
Uh, at present, I have no direction to modify.
Okay, fair enough.
But I'm happy to jump into my presentation if that helps.
Yeah, just to confirm, the uh, planning rationale that you directed us towards is the uh, document uh, the yellow background?
No, that would have been a presentation materials. I'm referring to uh, our, our planning letter dated October thirty first.
Okay, staff, can we just pull that up, make sure that we have that in the file? Perhaps with the, so that's not, that's not the letter you're referring to. Okay. Let's see if we can locate that, make sure that we have it in the file.
I I believe it would have been sent in the same email, though.
Through you, Mr. Chair, can I just confirm with the applicant, um, do you remember who you sent your updated?
Brendan.
Thank you.
I do have a hard copy I could leave with the clerk if that helps.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm going to stress while we look for it, we won't start the clock, but if the applicant would want to summarize?
Certainly, um, it uh, it it generally includes a, a typical planning justification for a variance. We walk through the proposed development, the context, the uh, nature of the variances, the land use policy framework applicable to the site, and run through the four tests. Uh, my conclusion being, of course, that we feel the uh, proposed variances uh, collectively and individually meet the the provisions of section forty one of the Planning Act, and uh, should be approved as they represent good planning.
I'm just curious, it, I I don't see the letter in my package, uh, full disclosure. Uh, we do have the presentation material. I will ask, and I don't, I don't mean to put you at a disadvantage, but I, I mean, would you be able to take us through the contents of that letter using the uh, planning rationale document? using the planning rationale document?
Sure.
Yeah?
Certainly.
Okay. And I apologize if that has been submitted, but we want to make sure that we are getting all of the information. Okay, so we've got the clock up. Five minutes is all yours.
Excellent. And I guess at the outset, I'm advised that prior to my engagement, the the owner and the architect have had numerous meetings with community neighbors, several of them are present today. We haven't been able to quite work out all the issues. Suffice it to say, I think, as hopefully I'll demonstrate through the presentation, I think a lot of this just comes down to a a matter of a difference in architectural or design preference, which might be outside of the scope of the committee. I'll do my best to demonstrate how the variances, independent of the design, are still acceptable. The first slide you'll see is simply a context map showing the subject property. It is on Turnhill Crescent, just north of Overland Drive, which is just in the residential neighborhood to the east of the shops at Don Mills, to give you a little context. The next slide shows several, three of the five variances that are being considered today. We do have a request for an increased maximum lot coverage, which was reduced from a previous request, and we are now requesting 30.95%, whereas the bylaw requires 25% as I would have described in my justification. I feel this is numerically modest. It would not be readily apparent to a passerby on the street, and it still generally maintains the character of the area with respect to setbacks. Same with the requested rear yards reduction on the east side only. Top of the page being assumed north. We are looking for, again, a numerically modest reduction from 1.8 meters to 1.5 meters. And it's notable that the 1.8 meter requirement, sorry, if we could stay on that first slide, that 1.8 meter requirement is actually through an exception. If the parent bylaw governed, 1.5 would be the requirement. And then lastly, the rear yard setback, which again has been modified to reduce, to to improve the condition. The initial request was at 7.1 meters, reduced from about 7.64. We're now asking for 7.48. So that is again, I think, a numerically modest reduction. Part of the rationale for the rear yard reduction is, as you'll see, the the rear of the dwelling is is quite, quite articulated. And the intent of that, which is shown on a later slide, is to preserve all the trees on and adjacent to the subject site. So you'll see there is a tree right in the middle of the rear yard that we've sculpted the dwelling around in an effort to maintain that. So obviously, if we had not done that, we would have made a more regularized rear yard, maintained the the rear wall, and the rear yard probably would have met that requirement while maintaining the same lot area. Lastly, and probably most importantly, if we could scroll up in this presentation package, or the two is the, yeah, and maybe we zoom in, is the main issue, I think, that most of the residents and the councillor are concerned about, and it is the rooftop patio or or deck, as I will call it. Noting that we do not require a relief from the height provisions of the bylaw, it is strictly related to the number of platforms in the area of that platform. The number of platforms, simply because we do have a balcony off of one of the bedrooms at the rear of the house. At the second level, this is technically considered a a platform as well, so it becomes a second platform, even though technically it is the roof of the dwelling. And in terms of the size, this, we have worked very closely with staff on. Originally, the area was something in the realm of 19 square meters. We brought it down to 13.4 square meters. It is set back considerably from not, not just the property lines themselves, but actually the wall of the dwelling. From the the sidewall there, it might be small to see on the screen, but the setback is about 3 meters from the raised planters and privacy screens that are proposed to wrap around this platform to the parapet. So then you also have a 0.3 meter parapet and then the side yard. And then from the front wall or front parapet, you have about 2.5 meters plus 3.3 meter parapet, and then the front yard of the dwelling. Again, the intent is to not provide any privacy or overlook concerns to the the neighbors. So the entirety of the the platform on the front set along the front yard, side yards, not the rear yard, is wrapped by a private, by raised planters and includes a privacy screen. It is intended simply as an area of respite and quiet contemplation by the owner. And so again, we feel that, and we've provided some renderings on the next slide, which do show some front elevations of the building. And you will not be able to see this platform standing on the street. That's further shown on the next slide, which has some schematic cross-sections from the street showing various viewpoints to simply demonstrate that the the this, the pop-up accessing this area would not be visible. In that regard, I do believe, in my own opinion as a professional planner, any concerns about privacy and overlook are sufficiently mitigated. Similarly, I feel that all the variances, both collectively and individually, are are minor in nature and meet the four tests. With respect to what I presume will be a lot of the concern from the neighbors, there is concern, you know, the dwelling is a modern architectural design. There is, again, some disagreement between the owner. We have attempted to to make modifications where possible while maintaining the design intent. But certainly, I feel that the, and and as demonstrated on the following slide, which shows the number of modern type dwellings in the area, it's not uncommon in these evolving neighborhoods to see a mix of traditional and more contemporary architecture. In this case, the the materiality is similar and will have a high degree of finish. The front yard setbacks and landscaping do not require relief. And absent just the minor reduction in the side yard, it would be my opinion that the character of the street would be maintained. It would maintain the pattern of setbacks, massing, scale, et cetera. And on that basis, I believe the general intent and purpose of the official plan has been maintained. And through discussions with the councillor's office prior to his sending the letter, we have committed to, and and assuming we are successful today, through the permit stage, will look at matter, means to perhaps increase or or improve the visual interest of the the concrete side of the building, as I believe that is, that is one of the concerns of the residents. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just a clarifying question. On your presentation, in your presentation, I believe it it shows the area of that platform at the top. It's 13 point something, 4 or 5 meters. That's a reduction from the requested variance of 19.19?
Yes, and apologies, I neglected to mention there. In in the history, there's actually been two staff reports updated to the AIC. The first staff report referenced, referenced the roof patio, but provided an opinion that that, you know, the the applicant had worked with staff and suggested that there was no concerns and recommended approval. Subsequent to that, on November 5th, a revised report was uploaded. I'm not certain what changed the opinion of of staff, but now they are recommending that the variances be modified to remove the rooftop platform or or refuse the variance. We feel that the initial application wasn't, did have a platform in the area of about 19 square meters, and we've reduced it down to to 13.45, and that is what we are requesting approval today.
Okay, so staff, let's just make a note. On the public notice, we are modifying variance number three from 19.19 meters squared to 13.34, is that correct?
13.4, sorry, 45.
13.45 meters, okay. So this is a modified, being presented as a modified application.
And and just to clarify, I believe in in the revised staff report, it does reference variance one and four having modifications as well. But I I'm not sure if that made it on the notice, but they similarly improved the condition.
Okay, very good. Any questions at this time?
Yes, Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You indicated, back to the rooftop garden, you indicated that it's set back from the edges of the of the building, which is a privacy issue. But then you've got a privacy screen and a privacy panel, and I'm not sure. It appears to go, it's drawn as though it goes all the way along the two sides, along sides of the of the garden. Why is that if setting it back is sufficient for privacy?
That was just to provide extra assurance or extra caution, if you will. It might, the the setback would would preclude visibility of the platform from the public realm, but there could still be perceived impacts of privacy and overlook, and we wanted to ensure that there was no.
Okay, so can you clarify on the drawing of the roof? Where this privacy panel goes? It appears to go down.
If we could bring up that that slide in the presentation?
It doesn't appear to go on the two shorter ends. It appears to go on, it's a glass guard at the top.
So it would be, keep going down, that slide there. Perhaps if we zoom right into the yellow line, that shows the outline of the the terrace. So I guess, again, if if, in this case, north would be the bottom side of this image, so the street would be the bottom side of the image, it would go along the.
East and west?
The the east and west, and also the 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 street line. So the, so the view is.
It's going nicely on A104.
The the view would be essentially limited to just over the rear yard.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, we do have some other speakers. Like to hear from, is anybody here in person for this item? Please come on down to the podium.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Of course.
I would like to just take a second to say first to the owners and residents.
Before you do that, I'm gonna, I sort of interrupted. Just get your name and address for.
My name is Elmar Kramer. I'm a resident and owner at 8 Turnhill Crescent.
Okay.
I would like to say first, just a, just a quick word to the owners and residents of the property that we we are not, we are opposing their plan, but we don't do it out of any personal feelings. We wish them well, and we like them. We're not trying to be enemies of theirs. However, we are opposed to the plan, and we are opposed to it because we think it would be bad for the neighborhood. And this is not a matter of the details of lot coverage and and the number of platforms and so on. Others will speak to that. But it's a matter of the nature of the proposed building. Let me begin by saying that Don Mills is a planned, was started as a planned community, and it's been a very successful community. People have come, lived there for long periods of time. My wife and I have lived there for 60 years in the house we own. And people have come back in subsequent generations to live there. It's been known as a family, a a family-friendly neighborhood, a place, a good place to rear children. This is partly picked up in a a statement I want to quote from the, from this, the official planning document for the city of Toronto, which says that in the area of central Don Mills, which includes Turnhill Crescent, there should be, quote, "a sense of scale and consistency in design." Now, the building that is proposed, there's a photo, there's a picture of it that was in there, the materials set out that is online. And I would like to say, just say a few words quickly to show, to point out in the ways in which that is not sensitive to scale and consistency of design. Unlike almost all of the buildings in the, on Turnhill Crescent, certainly all neighboring buildings, this building differs in certain respects. First of all, you will notice that on the the side facing the street, there do not appear to be any windows. There, apparently, the part where there's a shadow between the two parts of the building, there's some sort of extended skyline. But these are, by windows, I mean, windows from living areas in the house looking out to the street. There are none. There is no obvious front entrance. Almost all of the houses on Turnhill Crescent not only have a front entrance, but they have a little porch. They have a covered entryway. They have a porch that is inviting to people. These are some of the ways in which this design is not, in any way, is not sensitive to the scale and consistency in design of the neighborhood. That's my main point. I also believe that the vast majority of my neighbors agree with me about this. I haven't done a survey that to back that statement up, but a number of them have spoken with me. And this is what we have been given as an image of what to look for, what we're looking at, and they all say, we don't like this. And I think they don't like it because it doesn't fit the, the neighborhood is supposed to be a homey neighborhood, a nice neighborhood for families with children. This building looks more like a commercial building than part of such a neighborhood. And that's, it's on those grounds that I would urge the committee not to approve the the continued development of this, of this particular plan that needs to be modified. And that's the main point I want to make. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No questions. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, we have any other speakers here in person that would like to speak to this item?
Yes. Yeah, I'd also like to speak to the item.
Okay, are you from the same address?
Yeah, I'm at 83 Turnhill Crescent.
Okay.
And if you go up to the satellite picture, you screen up, I'll show you.
Mr. Chair, we just need a name and.
Yeah, name and address. Just be mindful if you were from the same address, not, we're supposed to have one speaker per address, but there's.
Yeah, we're a different, I'm a different.
Oh, you're a different address, okay. Yes, your name and address and.
Okay, so Paul Gittoland, and I'm at 83 Turnhill Crescent. And I mean, so my, our backyard touches their backyard. So we're just around the corner, first house. If you, 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 there, you see, there's the corner house, and then the next one, you're almost, you were just about on it. Okay, so I see the clock's running, I want to be careful here. I want to point out, though, even the rectangle around, drawn around there, makes that yard look much bigger than it actually is. Okay, so, so. Okay, so I've never participated in anything like this before, and I've never objected to anything a neighbor is doing. But as Elmore said, there's, there's no one on the street that is happy with the design of this house. They find it fortress-like. Even someone said, looks like a prison. So I have spent time going around and got a petition, as as many as I possibly could in the time that we had. So I have 34 signed names besides the one that was submitted. There isn't one person who has said in any way they accept this design. People will start off saying, well, you know, someone should build it, build on their property, until they look at what it is. It just looks too closed off from the street. So I'm not sure if I can hand that petition, the petition into you afterwards. I do want to comment on what was presented here. The neighbors haven't really come to us with any real discussion about our objections. We've gone a little bit to them, but there hasn't been really an open discussion as to how they could maybe change the design to be more suitable to Turnhill Crescent. Okay, so I'm I'm watching the time here. Maybe I should just move on to a couple other points. I want to address the three support letters. They're in the file. Those support letters, those people live at least one and a half kilometers away from Turnhill Crescent. And the support letter actually works for the company Six I X Design. So I don't think the support letters are justifiable. I even went around and looked at the houses of these support letters. One house is an empty house that is, with a sign at front, with a planned redesign of the house. So I don't think the support letters are valid for supporting this, the design of this house. And no one on Turnhill has signed to support the house. There is, if we look at the design up there, if you scroll down and you can see, first of all, we didn't get, the the letter sent to us was sent October 28th. So we've had just a little over a week to put this together. It has been a considerable amount of work. But if you, if you look at the one side of the house, you see the left side of the house, 12, 12 turnhills right beside that, that will be an enormous. twelve, twelve turnhills right beside that, that will be an enormous wall that will be blocking off twelve turnhill. There's very little space between twelve turnhill and ten turnhill. That resident will be blocked morning sun, no garden, and be severely detrimental to the, the enjoyment of his property, and he's been there for twenty-three years. If you, you can see where there's actually, um, an image that shows how massive that wall is. It would be on the far side, so if you scroll, you can see that. So, uh, there, in the presentation, you know, there are pictures in this presentation of houses on Turnhill that have been rebuilt. And you can, if you scroll down, you can see those pictures, and they are much more open to the street and residents, I've talked to residents on the street that have rebuilt on Turnhill, which purposely wanted, rebuild a house that suited the area of Turnhill Crescent and not block off, uh, the other residents. The roof deck, I've got four seconds, right? We are concerned about the, the roof platform to a great deal. We're concerned about noise, we're concerned about invasion of privacy, a serious intrusion of privacy in the sense that the, the building is going to be quite high, seemingly more than two stories in height, maybe because of high ceilings. And the, the people on the roof will be able to easily peer down into many backyards. There's like five backyards that go all together, for example. There is a potential drainage problem in building it, the extension into the backyard because the current house does have a severe drainage problem at present, and so there'll be less land to soak up water, and I don't know what kind of accommodation has been put in place-
Final remarks?
Well, that is a, you know, so, and the slope of the roof, I'm not sure where that water's gonna go. I wish I had more time, I really do.
Okay, we've got lots of other, uh, parties to hear from on this file, so hopefully they'll be able to capture some of the, uh, concerns.
When, did you read through what has been submitted carefully?
We've read through everything in the file.
Yeah.
All of the letters, all, everything's been read through, so a lot of this stuff we're hearing, oral testimony we're hearing today, we've read it. I'll let you know, so if you haven't captured some items in your oral testimony, then they certainly have been captured in, through our review of the file.
Good, I made a submission and, uh, I really appreciate it because I think there's been a considerable, uh, uh, you know, objection to this, to the design. We want to work with the neighbors too, just like Elmore says. Even sitting here, we made the initiative to talk to the people who own the house and say what our concerns were because we like them, that's a young family, we want them as neighbors.
Fair enough, okay, thank you.
Do I turn this off now?
Uh, unless, do we have any other speakers here to speak to this item in person? Oh, yes, we have a question for you from, from one of my colleagues, Mr. Kupin.
Yes, sir. You, uh, you, so from the presentation that they have taken made, uh, the changes that they're, uh, proposing, you used to find that doesn't meet the, the needs of the neighborhood.
I think the changes are extremely minor. They, uh, the distance between the back of the house and the back property line, I, I think they took a foot and a half off to be, make twenty-five feet. Uh, the, the, the platforms, from what I understand, the zoning bylaw is four square meters. They went from nineteen square meters to thirteen and a half square meters. I don't see that as that significant, so I don't see much change. And, uh, if we look at some of the images there, I'm quite struck, which, we just recently got this presentation, right? I'm quite struck by the one side of the house beyond the street, the right side of the house, how massive it is and how massive the wall is that would be very close to twelve turnhill.
Fair enough, yeah.
Second question, sir.
Sure.
You also said that the support letters, uh, does, don't seem to be genuine. Do you know, uh, do you have an idea of wood or, or, can you substantiate a little bit about that?
So, I'm a little unclear about your question, sorry, please forgive me.
You said the support letters that-
Yes, oh, there are three support letters?
Yeah.
I don't see those as valid in any way. Um, they, first of all, uh, they live, um, we're south of Lawrence, they're north of Lawrence. They're at least, uh, one and a half kilometers away. And actually, uh, one person that supplies, uh, signed the support letter, he is in a, he has worked as a consultant for the, the very company that's doing this design. I think that's a conflict of interest. Uh, another signature is from a house that's empty right now, that's in the process of a rebuild. And I've talked to neighbors on the street and I was told there was no intention for that person to live in that house. So he's not really a neighbor in any way. So I think the support letters are very weak and it, and they don't have one support signature from Turnhill Crescent.
Okay, thank you.
It's good? Any more questions?
All right, I think that's it, yeah. Staff, uh, do we have any other speakers online to speak to this item?
Through the chair, we have Vesna. Uh, Vesna, we have sent you a request to unmute. If you could just press star six on your phone.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, your name and address for us?
Hello, good afternoon, thank you for your time and opportunity to speak. My name is Vesna Vatic and I'm from the sixteen Turnhill Crescent.
All right, and, uh, you have some concerns with this application?
Yes, correct, and, um, I believe that my neighbors who are present, uh, uh, in, 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 in the place right now have already covered most of them, uh, like related to size, to rooftop, patio, industrial look that is out of place in the neighborhood. And, um, I, I would like to, um, also the letters of, uh, support that are of concern as well because they, they are definitely not from, uh, the people that live in this neighborhood, actually. They're a few kilometers away, at least the official addresses that the letters came from. And, um, uh, I just want to bring, uh, po, two points here. One is related to the current, um, im- impression of neighbors in this neighborhood and how, uh, some of the comments are reflecting what they see as a proposal. And my apologies in advance, but, uh, some of those, uh, names for the proposed dwelling are along the lines of Amazon Warehouse, uh, Data Center, Military, Military Banker, uh, what is this, oh, Watchtower, uh, Prison. So, uh, just to show what kind of impression this proposed architecture actually left, uh, uh, among the neighbors on the street. And, um, uh, again, uh, so many neighbors li- lived, uh, lived here for many, many years. And the second item that I would like to point to is within the presentation, that is, uh, uh, one of the supporting materials on the site. Uh, I believe that is page, uh, six, I believe, no, page eight. Um, uh, there is a reference to similar new houses in the area. This statement is not true, uh, because those new houses that they presented there are actually not similar because they do have their faces towards the street. This proposal, uh, does not have the face of the house towards the street. House is more guarded from the street in a fourth style and, um, which you can see on page six, for example, how the street look will be. And that is definitely, in my opinion, in, uh, regulation of plans for the central Don Mills area. Um, since, uh, the intention is the buildings to be, uh, to have a sense of scale and consistency in design. So that, those were the items that I wanted to point, thank you very much for your concern.
Okay, thank you, any questions?
So I want, could I give you-
I, we can't at this time.
You want it, all right?
I, I'm sorry.
Could I give you, uh, petition?
I, if we, I believe we have it on file, if not, you can hand that over to staff.
Yeah, you can't, you can, unfortunately you can't present anything to the panel members.
It's a different one, this is much more accurate, much more personal.
Yeah, we can't accept any, uh, evidence or further documentation during the hearing just because it has to be made public and circulated, but, you know, there's just quite a bit, I, I, I think your point that there is some objection with this amongst the neighbors, I think that point is made and, and taken. I don't think we need another.
I just want to make one statistic. The time limit, do we, the letter was mailed out twenty-
We, I can't take any further submissions at this time, okay. All right, so do we have any other speakers, uh, on, on, online, staff? No, okay, so I'm, I'd like to turn it back to the agent now uh, and give, give you an opportunity to respond only to those, uh, concerns that were brought up by the previous speakers.
Certainly, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I was trying to get my notes down for all the issues, so apologies if I missed some. Um, but generally, again, as, as, as I suggested earlier, I think a lot of the opposition has to do with the style of the building and, and I will concede, it is a modern building. Um, the, the intent of providing those similar style photos in the presentation package was, again, to demonstrate that not that this building is in the exact same design or, uh, uh, same, you know, ma- matches, uh, identically those buildings, but more to demonstrate that there are examples of modern vernacular architecture in the community. Um, with respect to the comments about windows in the front facade and the front entrance, um, again, I, I, I'm a bit unsure how to respond simply because that is not a matter for zoning. I can d- refer to the front elevation, which, um, you know, perhaps maybe the, the cover page of the architectural plans, which has the rendering, shows a S, and provide maybe a bit of a, uh, a, a bit of a design description that was provided to me, which is simply, again, to celebrate simple building materials, concrete and brick, and, and look at the notion of two masses sort of crashing together. And in that regard, there is, uh, a very clear difference between the left side and the right side. Uh, the brick side would have windows in bands going the full height of the building, and similarly, the point at which these two masses meet, uh, is a consistent glass atrium, skylights, what ha- what have you, uh, which would go up the full height of the building and clearly demo- demonstrate the front entrance of the building uh, in this regard, and again, given that no, no variances are required for any matter related to height, main wall height, uh, front yard setback, front yard landscaping, and in fact, as we're retaining all the trees on and adjacent to the site. Again, I, I don't believe, in my own professional opinion, that there is an issue with, with scale. Um, again, the, the city official plan, the parents and both, and, uh, you know, to which the central Don Mills secondary plan does defer for infill criteria in neighborhoods. Um, I did provide a fulsome summary in my letter, but again, suffice it to say, I believe this development would still meet those criteria. Uh, the city official plan also, as I described in my letter, does include, uh, some direction for how, um, uh, modern architecture can coexist with more traditional architecture to the extent that that is a matter that can be controlled by zoning. I've also included an analysis in that letter, and I do feel that it is, uh, it, it, it is compatible, it is capable of, of coexisting in a harmonious manner. There was comment about the side yard between, uh, the proposed building and that of twelve turnhill, and I can clarify that, uh, that is the side yard which does not require a reduction. So it is meeting the zone standard, in fact, uh, because there's a slight angle to the property line. At the front of the building, it's a little larger, uh, I believe at one point nine, about one point nine meters, uh, meeting the one point eight towards the rear of the building, and again, the height of the building is as per zoning. Uh, so while I, I am conscious that this might be a change to, compared to the current condition, um, it is, uh, that, at least that elevation is compliant with the zoning bylaw. With respect to drainage, um, again, that is a matter that is dealt with at the permit stage, as the committee knows. Uh, my, what I can suggest and hopefully help reassure, uh, the neighborhood about is that, um, as, uh, suggested to me by a civil engineer friend of mine, every time there is a redevelopment, it actually serves to improve the stormwater management conditions for an area because it does come in and update, uh, though, you know, and implement better stormwater management practices based on more current standards, uh, than might pri- previously exist and that, in this case, would be something that, uh, would be dealt with at permit. We would have to provide a stormwater management plan and a grading plan, which, uh, to reference, uh, Mr. Share, your comments from an earlier matter, uh, would have to be, uh, match existing grades at the property line, we cannot just arbitrarily raise or lower grades. Again, I think, uh, my prior comments talked about the roof deck noise and invasion of privacy. Again, it's my opinion, I think we've done as much as we can, uh, to rectify and, and, uh, prohibit or mitigate any even potential privacy or overlook concerns. Um, again, the, the area is intended for simp, for simple, uh, you know, seating. It is not intended to be, you know, a, a dance floor or something of the like, there's no, there's no room, or at least is contemplated for barbecues or things like that, that would be in the rear yard. And again, I, I do acknowledge that the, the, the scale of the change from four square, square meters in the bylaw to thirteen point four nine, uh, four or five, as we were requesting today, numerically, it, again, yes, it does appear, uh, large. However, I think when you look at the intent and purpose of that zoning framework and consider that this is technically the roof of the building, not a separate platform hanging off the side of a building like a typical balcony, uh, the, the nature of the change, again, is minor and, and, and would meet the four tests, in my opinion. Um, aside from that, I, again, I'm not really able to comment on the architectural design, aside from to say it's simply a difference of preference.
Okay, thank you very much, any questions at this time, Mr. Kniffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, am I correct, there, there isn't an elevation drawing of the front elevation in the package?
For, for some reason, that does appear to, uh, have been omitted, um-
Okay, so then, just to clarify, in the rendering, which appears at the beginning on the table of contents,
Mm-hmm.
It's a bit misleading, that big concrete block, in fact, is not a total concrete block, that black line um, is the indication of a garage door.
That is correct, the, the intent-
Which would presently not be built out of concrete, so that the material will change in that particular area at least.
I think the intent is to select a garage materi- door material that, that maintains the look, uh, but certainly, as, as I referenced earlier, through the permit stage, we've heard the concerns, we will be potentially looking at means to maybe improve the visual in- interest. The intent was to more, to, to celebrate concrete as a traditional material, so it would be done to a high degree of finish. But again, there, we, we, we could look at opportunities, uh, through the permit stage.
Thanks. Any other questions? No, okay, we've had a lot of speakers on this, we've spent a lot of time going over this file, so I, I just want to thank everybody, uh, who came down to participate today. Um, I'm gonna take this into committee now, um, perhaps for some very brief discussion from my colleagues and, uh, a decision. Okay, uh, let's take this into committee.
Uh, I can kick it off there, Mr. Chair.
Sure, Mr. Bertol.
Uh, regarding the variances, um, uh, item number one, uh, with the lot coverage, it's not really triggering any other issues with, with respect to green space or setbacks, so I don't have any particular concerns over it, nor do I really have any concerns over, um, a- any of the variances, to be honest. While variance number three for the platform or the rooftop, uh, deck or patio is numerically typically larger or it is larger than what's permitted. Uh, I think when you think, when you take it in context, uh, with the way the building is designed, with the setback, its general location, it's not gonna provide a privacy concern. It, it's well set back, it's roughly on center with the building. And it has a privacy screen behind a parapet, the views from that are going to be nil at best. Uh, so I, I don't see any privacy concerns, uh, with that, and I think that they've done some thoughtful design in order to accommodate a, a good-sized rooftop terrace uh, without having overlook into anybody's property or windows or anything like that. So, uh, from that point of view, um, I don't see, um, any issues. I will say that I understand the neighbor's concerns and stylistically, it's not what you want to see on the street because you don't feel that it fits in with the neighborhood and its character, and I get that. Unfortunately, we're not here to be an architectural, uh, critique committee, committee, we're here to look at the, the variances in the zoning a- and the merits presented by the applicant. So from my point of view, while it may not be everybody's cup of tea, and I understand parts of it may seem stark with a lot of concrete and hard surfaces facing the street, you're right. Uh, but with a few minor tweaks to this project, they could build this building without coming to us and ever having anybody's voices concerned and just get a building permit and carry on. and ever having anybody's voices concerned and just get a building permit and carry on. Um they've asked for a little bit extra. The extra that they've asked for, in my opinion, is not earth shattering, and I think is, is uh supportable. So from my point of view, uh I'll support this application.
Yes, Mr. Niffel.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with my colleague. I'm going to support the application as well. I I don't have difficulty with the variances. I, I don't even agree that the, as planning is requesting that the um rooftop platform be removed. I think there's been care and consideration taken to how it's placed and what occurs between the platform and the edge of the building to deal with, with privacy issues. In terms of the architectural expression, that's not, it's not on our particular uh range of, of options to deal with. I don't think we're in any position to be dictating architectural expression. I will say that um with some further um review, maybe some further articulation of that concrete plane, uh different finishes and the garage door, the, the mass of that one block could be made uh considerably less dominant um and may address some of the concerns of the, of the neighborhood. But that's not something we can place as a condition of a variance application. So like my colleague, I'm prepared to support the application, the revised application.
Okay. Yeah, very, uh I, I, I'm supportive of the comments that came from my colleagues. I uh you know, with a background in a heritage architecture, I'm, I'm constantly looking at, you know, working in character neighborhoods, and I understand the sort of desire, you know, for those sort of things. But in this case, I, I, I would agree, the, the variances aren't driving the massing to become overbearing. They're still pretty much, I mean, building within their as of right in terms of amassing. Um and the requests or the variances that are being requested are, are slight, and I think justified, given the, the condition. So um but hopefully that provides a little bit of um, you know, a sage is a little bit of the concern with, to, to the neighbors. Um certainly with privacy and overlook and all of that. Uh you know, usually it's the opposite. Neighbors are complaining it, there's too many windows and there's a lack of oversight and privacy. But in this case, it's actually, you know, they're designing the house in a way whereby the the uh, the occupant, you know, they, they wanna, you know, they wanna conceal that. So it's, 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 it's interesting to kind of see the reaction to that sort of that strategy. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
I, I can put forward a motion, Mr. Chair. Uh through you, I'll put motion, uh forward a motion to approve this application subject to variance uh number three being uh reduced from nineteen decimal one nine meters to thirteen decimal four or five meters square.
I think we also have uh some modifications to.
Variance one and four from planning.
From planning. We got some slight uh up to the lot coverage and the uh rear yard setback.
That's right.
No issues, but those were not amended by the applicant here in front of us when we went through those.
Well, perhaps, yeah, perhaps for some clarification on whether or not those variances are being uh modified on the floor. I'm going to take us uh out of committee. I'm gonna ask the agent to clarify whether variance number one and number four are being modified.
Yes, in that regard, sir, and sorry, apologies for not clarifying earlier, but um we have no issue with those modifications as suggested by planning staff.
Okay. So they, so staff uh and to my members, uh the, the variance number one uh for lot coverage is being modified but to thirty one point eight six or from thirty one point eight six to thirty point nine five.
That is correct. Perhaps maybe for some tolerance, perhaps we could go to an even thirty one percent. Just an extra point zero five.
I mean, it's your call. You're modifying as the applicant, right? We're gonna take the information and.
Yep.
So you said the, the modification, sorry, for variance number one, thirty one point eight six to thirty one percent?
Let's stick with thirty point nine five.
Thirty point nine five, consistent with the planning staff report.
Yeah.
And uh as well, a modification to variance number four.
From seven point one meters to seven point four eight.
Yes.
So, Mr. Can I clarify? You said one is in line with the staff report, but I'm not entirely sure that's what the applicant means.
Yes, that's right. Okay. Let's go through the variances and just state what the changes are, just for clarity. Uh it's variance number one, lot coverage, the proposed lot coverage is thirty, um public notice is thirty one point eight six. That's being modified to.
Thirty point nine five.
Great. Uh variance number two is remaining unchanged, correct?
Correct.
Variance number three, uh the platform area has been reduced from nineteen point one nine to.
Thirteen point four five.
Thirteen point four five. Thank you. Um and then variance number four, the proposed rear yard setback uh is currently seven point one on the public notice, and we're increasing that setback to seven point.
Four eight.
Four eight. Thank you.
And variance five remains the same.
And variance five remains the same. Staff, did you get that? Yep. And uh thank you for uh noting that modification.
So.
And forestry.
Two.
Forestry two.
Forestry two.
So.
Okay.
Let's uh amend this motion to capture all of those changes. And so I'll put forward a motion to approve this application subject to the revisions uh noted here by the applicant um and subject to forestry condition number two.
Okay, very good. I have a second or second by this, Mr. Niffel in favor. Okay, that is unanimous. The application is approved as modified with condition. Great. Um to my colleagues and staff, do we need a five minute relief break before we finish the morning session? I believe we still have five items to get through, so. Okay, let's take five. The time is now one forty six, one forty seven. We'll resume at one fifty three. Six minutes. Good afternoon, everybody. Staff, are we, are we okay to resume?
We are.
Okay. Welcome back. Uh we are coming in on two o'clock. Uh we are on item eight of our morning session. I'm gonna do our best to move us through quickly. I'm hoping that some of the items that uh we're dealing with, we can deal with a little bit quicker. Um, okay, so uh item number eight is forty four Glengarry Avenue. This is an application uh to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear addition and deck. Uh requesting two variances for FSI and rear yard landscaping on file. I've got material from the applicant. Do we have uh our agent with us? Let's get my. Yeah. Do we have the agent with us?
Through the chair, we do have Jonathan Binkowski.
Okay, welcome back, Mr. Binkowski. Uh just a quick clarifying question. Um we have another speaker. I just want to confirm you guys are both uh representing the same party.
It's for three, Manny? Just wanted to clarify, you're asking if Manny is.
Manny, yeah. I see agent on both. Do we have uh Mr. Binkowski with us?
Through the chair.
Through the chair, Jonathan, we have sent you a request to unmute. If you could kindly unmute yourself.
No luck.
Through the chair, Jonathan, we do see that you are unmuted. Uh, through the chair, we do see that Jonathan has, um, disconnected his microphone. I believe he is trying to reconnect.
Okay, very good. You will, uh, hang on for him.
Through the chair, we do see that Jonathan has been unmuted.
Let me ask, do we have our other, um, speaker available? No, okay, it's probably just the one. And I, just based on the email address, I can't, it's, it's very likely they're both related. Okay.
Okay, Jonathan, you can speak.
Hello, committee, my apologies, for some reason, it's not, you're not hearing me when I'm speaking.
No problem, we, it appears we have a little bit of technical, uh, difficulty today. Um, I, uh, is it, just before we get going, um, for the record, your name and address?
Yes, Jonathan Binkowski, three zero one Q Warden Avenue.
Okay, great, um, I've reviewed the file. I don't think I need a presentation on this. I'm gonna ask my colleagues whether or not they would require a presentation. They, they said not, so, um, I'll, if there's anything you'd like to say, uh, uh, you know, uh, now's the time, but, uh, it looks like we can move into committee for a decision for you.
And Manny's not speaking, right?
And Manny, and just to confirm Manny's not gonna be speaking, right?
No, no, he will not be speaking.
Okay, very good. Okay, uh, great, thank you, Mr. Binkowski. Can we move into committee on this? Yes, Mr. Nitville.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, unless my other colleagues have a concern, um, I don't have any difficulty at all with this application. It's very straightforward. The variances requested to, um, uh, landscaping and I believe for, for space index are very, very small. Um, and I'd like to put forward a motion of approval without any conditions.
Okay, do I have a second or second by Mr. Kaboo? All in favor, that is unanimous. The application is approved without condition. Yeah, that's good. All right, great, let's move along to item number, done, dealt with item number nine, so we're gonna move on to item number ten, five thirty-four Glengrove Avenue. Purpose of this application is to construct an addition over the existing attached garage in conjunction with other interior and exterior alterations. We've got two variances that are required, front yard, uh, one for a front yard parking spot and the other for an east side yard setback on file. I have material from the applicant, a memo from Urban Forestry, form letters of support from five twenty-eight, five thirty-three, five forty-four and five thirty-five Glengrove, as well as one letter of objection from five thirty-two Glengrove. We've got our agent with us in person, welcome. Your name and at, your address for us?
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Julius DeRuder. I'm a planning consultant and my address is one zero two Corselet Road, Toronto.
Okay. Uh, Julius, uh, just to confirm, uh, I have a second person on my list, appears to be an agent, Joseph Cohen.
Yes, he's out of the country and I'm here standing in his place.
Very good, just to clarify, okay. And, uh, to staff, uh, we, do we do have the two neighbors with us?
Through the chair, we do have one neighbor sharing an address.
Okay, very good. All right, uh, gonna request a brief presentation from you.
Sure. Um, if the staff could turn up the support documents that I submitted. For the very first page. That's not what I submitted, so I don't know what that all is. That there might be another set of support documents that. Well, let's just go there, just rest there for a moment and just stay on that photograph. The, the proposal is to, uh, make that garage that you see in the photograph, maybe if you can enlarge that a little bit, to make that habitable, no, go back. To make that habitable floor space. If you can, again, could you enlarge that photograph? Perfect. So the, the proposal is to convert that garage to habitable floor space and to have a second story addition above the existing garage and to modify the roof of the structure to accommodate a complete, um, internal restructuring of the interior of the ground floor and the second floor of the house. The garage has a side yard setback of zero point six meters. Um, we're allowed to convert that garage space as habitable space and maintain that zero point six meter reduced side yard. The second story portion, the bylaw would, or if you can go down to the, um, next image, keep going down, there's a, a rendering somewhere in all of that material. I'm sorry, this is not what I had submitted, so I don't know what this came, where this all came from. It's all jumbled. There's a rendering somewhere in that package that we saw earlier.
I think the renderings actually, uh, comes up sooner in the file.
Yeah, it's, this isn't what I submitted, so I'm, I'm just.
There, there we go.
So if we go up to that rendering. This is a, an image of what the house may look like from the street in the context of the houses on either side. So we've got the filled-in garage space, we've got the second floor, uh, uh, addition above the garage on the right side of the drawing, uh, on, on the, basically the east side of the property line. That, um, illustrates the proposed point-six-meter side yard setback. We require a variance from points, one point two meters to zero point six meters for the second story portion of that addition. And there's a second variance, because we are removing the garage, we are asking that parking be permitted in the front yard on the driveway that you see in that, in the photograph. So those are the two variances that we are seeking. Um, essentially, we wanna, uh, build the wall on top of the existing wall of the garage because it makes sense structurally. It also makes sense aesthetically, because if there's a jog on one side of the house and not on the other, it's just gonna create an unsymmetrical look to the house and we just think it makes practical sense. And I think there is a letter of objection from the neighbor immediately to the east, which is the, the right side of the drawing. Um, and I'm sure they're going to speak to this items. So that's my brief presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions at this time? No questions?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, uh, let's move on to our next speaker.
Through the chair, we were unable to reach Nigel, but we do have Wei Chi Chen.
Thank you.
Hear me? Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
We can, your name and address for us?
My name is Wei Chi Chen. Address is five thirty-two Glengrove Avenue West.
Okay, so you are the immediate neighbor.
Yes, uh, I'm just wondering if it's, if you are also seeing us at the moment.
Through you, Mr. Chair, um, we have enabled your camera function, if you could start your.
There we go, yeah, we can see you now.
Okay. Actually, it would be helpful, oh, sorry. Uh, could I have access to the submitted, um, slides that, uh, I mean, the material? Yeah, uh, could you scroll down a little bit? There is a list of, um, approved decision, uh, this one. That's very helpful, thanks so much. Uh, if you, I think you want to see the, uh, other two columns on the right as well, if you could minimize it. Yeah, thanks so much. Okay. Um, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members. Uh, I'm here to speak on behalf of owners of five thirty-two Glengrove Avenue regarding the minor variance application for five thirty-four Glengrove Avenue. I will refer to the pertaining application as the application of this application and five thirty-four Glengrove Avenue as the subject property. Our first outline our understanding of this application, followed by our position and the reasons behind it. Our property at five thirty-two Glengrove Avenue abuts the subject property to the east. We understand that the application seeks approval to preserve the existing garage walls and convert the garage into a living space connected to the main house, to construct a second floor above the existing garage, also connected to the main house. The proposed eastern wall of this new second floor would be a vertical extension of the existing garage's eastern wall, which currently has a reduced eastern side yard setback of zero point six meter, fifty percent less than the required one point two meters. Our position is that, uh, a dwelling on this property warrants a minimum side yard setback of one, one point two meters, especially for structures exceeding one story. Should the owners of the subject property convert an ancillary structure, such as a garage in this case, into a living space? Sorry, and to build more atop the, uh, repurpose garage, both the second floor addition and the converted garage should adhere to the one point two meter side yard setback. The applicants have submitted a list of approved minor variance applications within the neighborhood of the subject property, um, which is the, this current page that we're looking at on the screen. We agree that this committee has approved new buildings and story additions with zero point six meter or smaller minimum side yard setback in our neighborhood. But these listed approvals did not involve claiming reduced minimum setback by using their existing garage's walls. We also agree that this committee has approved the request to convert a garage into a living space. However, we'd like to point out that the example provided here, one thirty-one Shawburn Avenue, they had their garage converted to a habitable space without compromising their minimum side yard setback. We ask, has the committee approved the conversion of garage into a living space while the garage has a fifty percent reduced minimum side, side yard setback? And has the committee approved the addition of another story on the existing garage using the garage's wall while this garage is sitting at such a close distance from the property line? Well, if such cases do exist, they are definitely not listed here. It seems that the applicants are using a garage and silly structure to rewrite minimum side yard setback requirements for main buildings on residential zones. I would like to quickly point out that, um, there's a separate section, section ten point five point six zero of the city's bylaw that's dedicated to regulate ancillary structures, including garages. Based on provisions under the sections, specifically ten point five point six zero point one sub two and sub four, it seems that the walls of an ancillary structure such as a garage are not directly equivalent to the walls of the main building. When repurposing a garage into a living space, it's in our opinion that not only the structure, but also the position of the garage walls should be reevaluated. Previous bylaw variances granted to a garage should not be automatically transferred to the repurposed structure. Now, returning to this list, we now focus on cases with approved reduced minimum side yard setbacks only. We would like to highlight that this list with offer, which offers the strongest evidence in support of the application regarding reduced minimum side, side yard setbacks, actually shows a noticeable decline in the frequency of similar variances approved over time. From this list, we can see that from two thousand eight to two thousand thirteen, there were eleven examples. From two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen, there were just three. And from two thousand nineteen onward, they found only one. Quote, neighborhoods are stable, not static, as stated in chapter two point three of the official plan. With population growth and especially in the wake of the pandemic, as people spend much more time nowadays at home, many of us have come to recognize the value of these cushioning spaces around our house. These spaces not only provide invaluable access to fresh air, sunlight, creating healthy and comfortable social distances. They also enable us to, um, to maintain our properties, to ensure privacy and safety and really to preserve our full enjoyment and use of our homes. We wonder.
Final words?
Sorry.
Just pass the five minutes, just if you can just sum up for us.
Okay, thank you, I'll hurry up. Uh, we wonder if the dramatic decrease in approval of these rather extreme requests for reduced minimum side yard setbacks over the years actually reflects the community and the city's evolving interest in preserving these minimum setbacks. Last but not least, we would like to point out that the listed properties here to support the application are at least a hundred and seventy meters away from the subject property. And the most recent example they provided comes from two thousand twenty, which is four years ago. Walking down the street and within the immediate vicinity of the houses, one can easily find many recent constructions. Just across the street, five thirty-three Glengrove Avenue, which is just five meters away instead of a hundred and seventy meters, they finished their construction in two thousand twenty-two. And five thirty-nine Coldstream Avenue abutting the subject property on the north, which just received their minimum variance approval three months ago. They're not on this list because they didn't ask for reduced minimum side yard setback. And we wonder how many more of the recent constructions or story additions are out there that they either did not ask for reduced minimum side yard setbacks or they asked for a rather gentle side yard variances.
Okay, thank you, I'm gonna have to cut you off there. We're just, we're way past the five-minute mark, we may have some questions for you. Um, I'm asking my colleagues, are any questions? Yes, Mr. Nitville?
Just a very quick one, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The existing, um, garage, I believe, has the minimum work, uh, minimum side yard that's being requested. Do you have difficulty with the garage or it's with the additional height?
Sorry?
That's the question, whether we have difficulty with the garage with additional height?
Um, addition?
I think it's the additional height. Because that reduces the views, uh, the views and the brings the, the houses closer together in a much larger degree.
Okay, but currently, you don't have any difficulty with the current situation, the garage as it is now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much to this speaker. Uh, do we have any other speakers on this item? No, okay, I'm gonna turn it back to the agent. I wanna give you an opportunity to respond to some of the concerns that were raised by the neighbor.
Yes, very quickly, um, the chart that you see up there is a, a chart that I produced. Um, I looked at all the committee of adjustment decisions in the neighborhood and I pulled the ones that were relevant to this case where we have a, a required side yard setback of one point two meters. So that's what this summary is. And I agree with the speaker that there are, there's only one example in that whole list that involved the conversion of a garage. And I'm not surprised by that, because that is a very unique situation. Converting a garage is not something you, the committee would commonly see. We have a situation where my client wants to save, save time for, like, any, um, um, and build the second story above it, it just makes sense, it makes practical sense. And if you go back to the rendering, the rendering, again, we. And if you go back to the rendering, the rendering, again, we want to see a symmetrical house that works. Um, in terms of what the speakers had said, I hadn't heard anything from them talking about any adverse impacts. I didn't hear anything about shadowing or overview or privacy or any of those kind of things. Um, I can see why they've already been able to coexist and live with the existing garage as it is. And all we're doing is adding a portion of mass above that garage to reconfigure the house from a three bedroom to a four bedroom house to make it work better for my client's family. There's no discussion from what I heard about the, uh, the first variance that dealing with the parking in the front yard. I don't think that's an issue. Um, I would suggest that there are no significant impacts to the neighbor next door or the immediate neighborhood. We, um, have the four letters of support. We probably could have gotten more if we wanted to. It's a fairly innocent application, I think, and those are my comments.
Is there any uh, building length or building depth being added via the addition, or we're just building on top?
Just building on top of the existing garage. And if you look at the site plan, you'll see the garage is not as long as the existing house.
Okay, very good. Any other questions at this time? No, okay. Thank you. Let's take this into committee for a decision. Yes, Mr. Bartolo?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So I, I think this application is fairly reasonable, straightforward. I really didn't hear any submissions by the uh, objecting party about how adversity impacts them.
Yep.
Uh, so uh, in understanding it, uh, it's an existing condition. The driveway already exists as well and they can park a car in it, uh, just to say it will be tomorrow if we approve this. Um, I think it's reasonable without any real adverse impacts. Therefore, I will put forward a motion to approve this application subject to the conditions of the urban forestry memo attached.
Very good. Yes, Mr. Niffel. It's a second? Okay, secondary to the motion, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous. The application is approved.
Through the chair, sorry to interrupt. It appears that your video has disconnected.
Oh, thank you for that. We will uh, we're back. Thank you very much, staff. Okay, let's move along. Item number 11. We're back on Turnhill Crescent, uh, this time, uh, number nine.
Right, hello.
Hello. The purpose of the application is to construct a new carport, shed and front deck to replace uh, one that is existing. We've got some variances before us, including lot coverage, west side yard setback for a carport and west side yard setback for an ancillary building and uh, deck encroachment. On file, I have material from the applicant as well as letters of support from 10, 19 Paper Birch Drive, number 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, 14, 15, 17, Turnhill Crescent, as well as an email from uh, Community Planning. Okay, uh, I don't see any other speakers to this item. Uh, let's get the agents, uh, just to state your name and address.
Uh, yep, I'm Amara Postian. I'm the homeowner at nine Turnhill Crescent.
Okay, um, I've reviewed the file. I don't uh, require presentation from you. I'm going to ask my colleagues whether or not they do. It seems not. Uh, if there's anything you'd like to add, now's the time, but it appears that we can move into committee for a prompt decision for you.
Uh, no, that's everything. I think you have all the info you need. Thank you for your consideration.
Of course. All right, let's take this into committee. Mr. Bartolo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, considering this is a uh, a replacement of some existing conditions and Community Planning has uh, come out and stated they have no conditions with it, large amount of community support, um, on balance, I think everything is, is minor and needs to foretest. Uh, therefore, I will put forward a motion to approve this application without condition.
Okay, uh, do I have a second here? Yes, second by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. Application is approved. Item number 12, 50 Glen Park Avenue. This application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a front porch and rear fixed canopy. We've got variances for building height, number of stories, building length, building depth, lot coverage, front yard setback, east and west side yard setback, rear canopy setback and west side exterior main wall height. On file, I have material from the applicant, staff report from Community Planning, uh, recommending some modifications, a memo from Urban Forestry, as well as letter of support from 46 and 54 Glen Park Avenue. We have our agent with us.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, uh, my name is Michael LaFreniere. I'm the architect on the project. Are, we're at 951 Ozzington Avenue. Uh, we're proposing what I would call a contextual pitched roof house for the neighborhood here. Uh, we have gone to both neighbors. Those are the two adjacent neighbors and they both signed that back, that letter of support for us. Um, as you probably know, this, these, this neighborhood is characterized often by the old below grade parking uh, garages. And so what we've done here is we've got that parking at grade and we have a partial third story. And that partial third story is, of course, making some of these variances required. The other thing I'd like to say is, is the, the shape of the house is not really a box. There's a lot of sculpting going on. We've, we've got a one-story piece at the back that projects out 2.69 meters. So that's uh, the main culprit for the building length and building depth. We've got a, a covered front entry and a garage that's been recessed as well as a kind of covered side entry, sort of a loggia that wraps around the side. So the uh, the coverage is a little high just because we're not really a box. As a couple of weeks ago, we did have a communication with Community Planning. We made a series of modifications to those uh, those drawings. We're happy with all of the modifications. And you do also have a revised uh, zoning notice from the examiner. We got all those drawings done in time for her to issue us a new zoning notice. So we're very happy.
Okay, very good. Okay, uh, just before we get to any further into this, I, I do note that this is like a modified application. Are we modifying, modifying some of the variances on the public notice?
That's correct. We're in, in line with the community report and, and the new zoning notice. So if we, if we want to go through those, those are the four items listed in the, in the uh, in the Community Planning report.
Yes.
You want me to go through them or you want me to go through the notice? I'm not sure how you want to do that.
To you, Mr. Chair. We're not going to go through the zoning review. We're going to go through the public notice.
Yes.
It's not appropriate to go through the zoning review at this point.
We're going to go through.
We're just happy to have that zoning review done so that we knew that our changes were confirmed. So.
Sure, we're mainly concerned with the public notice and the, the changes that are, are being proposed there. So um, can you just take us through the changes on the public notice, starting with variance number one for the proposed?
Number one is modified to 10.6 meters.
Okay.
Variants, I presume, yeah. Two, three, four remain the same.
Okay.
Uh, five, six, remain the same. Number seven, is that, sorry, it's hard for me to see here. Is that the east side or the west side? Number eight, the west side is being modified from 1.22 to 1.4.
Okay.
Uh, number nine, there is no canopy anymore, so number nine is removed. And number 10 is modified to 10.6.
Okay, and I should ask, um, any issue, uh, should we approve this? Is there any issue uh, tying the variance to uh, the east and west side elevation drawings? And that's actually, yeah, that's okay. All right. And that's in relation to variance number 10 for the side main wall height, just to ensure that that's built substantially in accordance with. Okay.
And there's also an urban forestry condition. We're fine with that as well, obviously.
All right. I should ask my colleagues whether they have any questions for the applicant. This seems pretty straightforward, given that we've gone through the modifications. Okay, um, I'll ask the agent if there's anything else you'd like to add. Otherwise, it looks like we can move into committee for a decision for you. Uh, is there anything you'd like to add?
Oh, no, sorry.
Or can I take this into committee? Oh, no problem.
My problem.
Okay. Okay, let's take this into committee, Mr. Kaboo.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, based on the presentation made by the applicant, I'm happy to more present a motion to adopt this application, uh, subject to forestry conditions and then uh, based on all the changes that was made on the floor today.
Okay, so those, those will be subject to the modifications outlined in the Community Planning staff report. Also, uh, staff, I believe, took note of those changes as well. Uh, with forestry number, you said one, two, two and three. Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have a second here for the motion? Yes, Mr. Niffel? Oh, yeah. Yes, I do believe that you noted staff, that you got this substantially in accordance with condition. We do, okay. All right, we have a second here. Do all in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. The application is approved with condition as modified. Okay, item number 13. 170 Shelbourne Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a new dwelling. We've got variances uh, before us, including front yard setback, lot coverage, driveway width, number of platforms off a rear main wall, rear platform area, building height, building length, building depth, rear, rear yard setback, number of stories, stair width and east side yard setback. On file, I have material from the applicant, a report from Community Planning, a memo from Urban Forestry, form letter of support from number 7, 17 and 19 Maddock Drive, 165, 168, 171, 172 and 173 Shelbourne Avenue and 127, 159, 160 and 161 Dalemont Avenue. Uh, do we have our agent with us?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
Okay. Um, I, have you looked at the report from Community Planning? I believe that they're asking for a, uh, there's a recommendation to tie the site plan?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, staff, I just want to confirm, we don't have any other opposition on this file? See, only the one speaker.
Through the chair, we don't have any other speakers for this item.
Okay, thank you for confirming that. I have a, just a brief question for the um, the agent. Um, is there any issue or concern tying the elevation drawings uh, to any potential approval here? Substantially in accordance with?
I don't really have an issue with that. I'm not sure what that achieves, but.
Well, you've got some variances here for building height.
Hmm.
Right, um? Uh, maybe I'll ask my colleagues. I mean, I, I, you know, I think part of the, you know, with respect to the elevation drawings, there's, you know, there's a good use of angular plane uh, slope with a roof, which helps I, in my opinion, to mitigate the uh, request for building height.
Right.
So, to answer your question, I, that's, that's the reason why I ask uh, whether that variance specifically for building height uh, could be tied substantially in accordance with the drawings.
Yeah, I mean, in essence, I don't really have any issue with that. Um, just sometimes when you do that and a window shifted six, eight inches and somebody makes a comment, then, you know, I just don't, if it, if it's the kind of overall, you know, 3D effect, the roof, none of that is going to change. That's all.
No, of course.
Very prescribed by law.
Yeah, no, it only pertains to the variance and, you know, we insert the word substantially in accordance with to specifically uh, avoid that issue if, you know, a, a window uh, happens to change. Um, what we're really looking at is, you know, should we approve a variance uh, here, we want to make sure that there's, there's no liberties that are taken with respect to that uh, variance, right? Because as presented, the building height is, is proposed on the elevations at a very specific point. Just want to make sure that that's, that is uh, is uh, maintained. At least, and that perhaps addresses my concern. Um, I, I should ask my colleagues whether they have any questions from you or require a presentation otherwise? Okay, all right.
I should try to give my name and stuff for the record. You, you didn't ask me.
Pardon?
You, you didn't ask me for my name and address for the record.
I apologize.
And Simon's been up hyping him.
I'm getting way ahead of myself.
Okay, that's okay. So it's Sarah Ifra. I'm the agent for the applicant and it's 313 Keller's Boulevard, Toronto, M6B, 109.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I just, forgive me, I'm, I'm trying to make some good use of our time here. Um, I, I did, I didn't mean to cut you short. Um, I, I mean, I, I, you know, with respect to the question I had uh, for the substantially in accordance with in the elevations, I don't require a, a full presentation and it looks like my colleagues don't either. I would like to provide you an opportunity if there's anything you'd like to add. Otherwise, it looks like we can move into committee for a prompt decision for you.
Yeah, no, I think I'm fine. I sent in my presentation and we've got lots of letters of support. So I think, I think I'm good unless there's specific questions.
Of course. Okay, any specific questions for the agent? No. Okay, let's take this into committee for a decision. Yes, Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd, I'd like to first of all say that the uh, the applicant did a, an excellent submission and I really appreciate it. It was easy to, easy to understand and very well presented. Uh, I think this is a reasonable application and um, I, I think it fits in with the area. I think it clearly meets the tests. In terms of tying it to plans, the planning department has suggested that it be, the development be substantially in accordance with the site plan and they've given the reasons for that. Uh, the point about the elevations, I agree with completely. The, I think the building is articulated in a way that attempts to reduce height and also on the back elevation, a, a roof structure has actually been used as a, a way of uh, promoting a greater privacy for neighbors. And so I think tying it to plans makes sense. On that basis, I'd like to um, uh, move approval of the application subject to tying the um, application to uh, development, sorry, to the site plan and also to the elevation drawings and also subject to forestry condition number four.
Uh, friendly amendment substantially in accordance with?
Sure.
All right. Uh, I would say, yeah, all four, four elevations, yeah, just given the nature. It's a very good use of angular planes, I might, I might add. And the slight setback off the, just to establish a two-story front main wall, it's done very well.
Thank you.
Yes, it's, it's, it's no insult to include those, but we just want to make sure that, that, that's carried forward. Okay, um, so we've got a motion. We have a second here by Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. The application is approved uh, with condition.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, we have one more item which we need to. Sorry?
Lunchtime, no?
Almost, almost, all right. We've got one more item we need to return to, uh, which is item three, 58 Baycrest Avenue. So let me just recap. We've um, we've heard from the agent and we've heard uh, from uh, another party, an objection to this file. And I would like to provide the agent an opportunity to respond to the objections, uh, specifically the objection letter, uh, that is on file, uh, from one of the neighbors.
Hello? You can introduce yourself on this time.
Yep, yep, so, so, um, this is Shelly again, um, from, um, 16th Beenagway. I'm the agent for a homeowner at um, 58 Baycrest Avenue. I have reviewed a neighbor's objection letter and I have kind of no further comments. Thank you for the, um, um, the time, everybody's time. And that, uh, the only thing I want to emphasize is that um, I see from the letter, they have concern about the environmental impact. I see from the letter, they have concern about the environmental impact. And I still want to emphasize that even though we reduce the soft gate, um, um, requirement in the back, in the front yard, but if you calculate the whole property, we have an empty, um, ample green space in the back. So, um, with that in consider, we believe it's reasonable to consider landscape across the entire property, um, as meeting soft gate and genetic limits. And, um, for our neighbors' other comments, um, um, like I, I, I cannot agree, but I, um, appreciate their comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, let's take this into committee for decision. Yes, Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm afraid I, I see no merit in this application whatsoever. Basically, it's an application to exchange landscaping for parking. There is, um, a garage, there's a driveway leading to the garage, and then there's this massive paved area that's at the expense of lost landscaping. I cannot support that. I think it's contrary to the direction the city is attempting to promote development to follow. Uh, and it's clearly, um, in opposition to the existing zoning bylaw approach to development. So, um, I will not be supporting this application.
Motion?
I, I would move that the application be refused, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do I have a second here? Second by Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? All right, that is unanimous. The application is refused. That concludes our morning session. The time is now 2:42 PM. We are going to take a bit of a shortened lunch. I've spoken with staff. We will resume in 45, just a little beyond 45 minutes, um, at 3:30. Is that good for everybody? Okay, uh, the afternoon session should move a little bit quicker, I hope, and, uh, I will do my best to, uh, get us through. So thank you very much for, uh, everybody's patience, including the people that are, are here waiting in the gallery to speak.